Now we move on to section four, which is personal safety. This is, in pages 4.1 to 4.21, questions on bugs.
On 4.1, you've got a $1.88 decrease in building services revenue. I remember we had a trouble squaring this with a recent complaint from somebody building a garage who claims that their $1,600 consent fee is double what they pay in Hamilton, Auckland or Christchurch. I know it's a bit anecdotal and we've got to cut, but we still seem to be charging fairly heavily for consent fees. And yet you've got this $1.88 decrease from reduced building consents. Can we look forward to further reductions in building consents in the future to align with the rest of the country?
To the Chair, the marked decrease is really in the commercial sector. Residential building is going well, but there's been a marked or significant decrease in revenue from the commercial, both in the dollar value of what has been done, so that is what we're talking about, of that $1.88. We did do, well, a couple of years ago now, a comprehensive review of all our fees. And that was comparing levels and peers when you cross the country, because you weren't sure of what the true costs were, especially if something was, if the functioning of building services was 100% funded by users, where there's a rate paid component in that as well. So, pretty to answer your question, I believe that our fees are at a very good level compared to the rest in New Zealand. If we're not on the high side, we'd be right in the middle. So, if you're prepared, I'd like to check to see if you let me know the details and that much more, and I'll follow it up, because as in the past, it could be that where one inspection was an history of work hadn't been done in the pebble stage. And that's why they'll be giving a increased fee for the hours it takes our inspectors to do it.
Well, to the Committee, as I said at the beginning, I said there were some departments where historically they think have generated the revenue, and at the end of the year it all just kind of disappeared in the wash up. This is one of those departments, so the building consent has historically for a while now run at under revenue. And at the end of the year, we just kind of, you know, there are overs and unders and it just disappears. What we are endeavouring to do, as we tighten our belts and the overs disappear, we have a lot less room to move at the end of the year. So, one of the other sides of that is that we need to be much more honest with the law or transparent on predicting revenue lines. So, we fixed resource consents a couple of years ago, this year there's a couple more. So, as we sort these out, we'll be up here, this is intent to line up the revenue with actually what we think revenue will be.
And in that process, you're also making sure that costs fall where they're occurred?
That's the intent.
But I would add to that, and we interrupt Mr Thompson, see, that depending on the policy of the Council, building consent fees may be subsidised in some instances by rate paid. So, for instance, in some jurisdictions, as I understand it, up to 50% or so on the cost of processing a building consent is actually paid from the general rate, and the person purchasing the service is only paying half. And in another jurisdiction, it would be quite different, when it's compared, when locals are compared, it gives a false impression. And that's up to Council to decide what policy they want to, we want the hat here about who pays, how much use of payers component. Right, the other two, so we've got regulatory services 4.1, then civil council 4.17. Any further questions on bugs? I will move from the Chair, the recommendations for this section, we go into personal safety, you have three recommendations, senior of the Council, Staines. The seven, I'll put it always with that, against. So, we move on to wasting water services. Wasting water services, and the first report before us here is the Tahuna Stage Two Upgrade via Solid Project, which is in pages 12.7 to 2.11. On the agenda, there's a typo, it says 12.7, it's actually 12.17. Questions on this report?
Page 5.11, on just, page 5.11. Under water production and the number of boil notice per day.
So, we're on the, we're teaching on?
Well, I saw this report.
Tahuna Stage Two, that's a report, we'll get to that. This is page 12.17.
I had a few exchanges, emails with Laura, and she's very pleased to elate my concerns. And I'd like to articulate them to the group, and Laura may wish to respond to them as a project. Would you, I mean, I'm not going to ask a question because I've already asked them, but I would like for Laura to have the opportunity to respond to what I articulate. Right, so, in reading through this document, I hear two questions, which I thought to Laura. The first was, it didn't say to me that the potential energy or fuel that is a bio-solid or bio-solids was perhaps, or had been considered by the energy plan team. And I'm aware that we're only at discussion and document phase of that, but I wasn't sure that we had fully considered whether or not we could utilise this as a fuel hit. When we're considering, for example, a wine pool upgrade and we're looking at a fuel source for that. I appreciate that what staff are trying to do here is maximise the use as a fuel source to add to the fuels that are powering the Green Island Waste Treatment Plant. But it wasn't clear to me that that has been the case, and I'm still not 100% convinced that we can pursue that option to the degree and that investigation to the degree that we can, could have. But that was one question. The second question was around carbon considerations. And I can mean staff, they haven't looked into the carbon emissions from truck movements as part of the consideration of the options. However, this is only one part of the total carbon budget for emissions from the bio solids project. And I appreciate that the staff that have been involved in this, I'm certainly not the expertise to analyse the carbon emissions. But I do think that it's something as a Council that we need to be conscious of. That when we're making decisions like this, we are effectively locking in emissions or end emissions profile for a potentially 40 or 50 year period. And I'm concerned that we haven't considered, we're considering part of it, which is great, but I'm concerned that that may be, may not be taken in consideration for full carbon's budget or greenhouse gas budget, as it's in our existing talk here. So, those are my two concerns, and Laura might wish to start.
So, I think first, before I can respond to the direct question, what I probably ought to do, particularly for benefit of those who were not here in previous iterations of this project, is just give the background in terms of why we ended up with budgets we've got in the annual plan in the first instance, which is predominantly because, at the time we were going through the container upgrade, we were of the understanding that we would not have an option to use the incinerator, we simply wouldn't get an air supply consent, and therefore we had to start with the other options. As a result of that, we looked, we went out with an RFP, and we looked for the best available options till we're out there. And none of them were simply not viable for the type of studies we've got. Some were extremely expensive and questionable, and we picked on one particular technology which we hoped would come to fruition, but now turns out even if it had worked, we probably couldn't afford it for the budget we've got. That pilot project, since closed down, it was not successful. And this is kind of the history with bio-solid technologies globally, to some greater or lesser extent. And running in parallel to that, we also were able to secure a 35 year discharge consent for the incinerator. So, we are now treating the gases off the incinerator, we have no objection to non-located fire consent. So, suddenly an option that was not available to us, and never was ever properly considered in the first instance, became viable. So, I guess that just sets the context in terms of why that was never really seriously considered in the first instance. Before we, in the history of that, we have looked at a number of different options. Moana and the potential to use sludge from Moana has been considered to some degree, and possibly didn't articulate about this as well as it could have done in our exchanges. There are a number of challenges with that, and one not least of which is the truck movements that are involved into a residential area with a product that even best treated does still have some over to it. And one of our key problems with the process of taking to landfill at the moment, is we do get older complaints from truck movements, the problem is like itself. It's not the only issue, but we would also have to invest heavily in new technology or additional technology to be able to prepare the sludge that we're taking to Moana in the first instance. So, that's been the Moana part. In terms of the question around carbon emissions, I guess there's two parts to that response. One is purely around the expertise that we have in-house, and that's, you know, throughout the Council, there is a limit to what we can do. Other than our exchange, I started reading some research reports on carbon emissions from sludge treatment, and my head exploded. So, we did what we could do with the basic information we had. We simply don't have some of the data about what the new technologies would do, let alone the, all the expertise, even the standard technologies that are available. And fundamentally, we haven't been able to identify an alternative disposal mechanism that we think will be viable, so there's nothing to compare it to, is one of our issues. Those that, we are distant from other parts of the world, in that large parts of the world still have land disposals available to them, and a lot of that technology is focused on treating ready for land disposal. That, because of Fonterra's dominance in the dairy industry, is simply not viable to us. But when you look globally, an awful lot of the technology is being developed to pre-treat such sludge to land. One of the things we did try to consider was how with, in an overall sustainability point of view, how putting more sludge into the incinerator compared, for example, with putting as much as we possibly could through Queen Island and the gas engine we've got there. And we did look at that, but one of the key things to identify is the process that we have at Queen Island, whilst it generates energy, it actually only reduces the waste volume by, I think it's about 40%, so 60% by volume, which is still plastic sludge, still out of the landfill. Incineration, by contrast, reduces the volume to 10%, and it becomes a inert volume. So, what we were trying to do is get the best view across all of the different strategies that we've got, to say, well, how does this stack up, given we actually don't think that there is currently a viable technology for us out there? And if we did find one, it would not be a $15 million technology, it would be significantly more. And when we went through that, we actually kind of looked at the incinerator with fresh eyes and went, well, hang on a minute, we can significantly reduce our sludge volume, so we're putting on a wake minimalisation far better than we would do otherwise. With the treatment process, we've got on the end of the emissions, that has been deemed by the ORC to be so minor that it wasn't even a notified resource consent. We stopped the vast majority of the sludge movements, so we deal double whammy with the owner complaints that we currently get from truck movements and with willing on carbon, and with the addition of the piece that we've looked at for ash reuse, sorry, ash recirculation, that would also mean we wouldn't have to use supplementary diesel. And we are taking the heat off what we use to fuel the site, and we're using that also to self-sustain the process, hence we don't need the supplementary diesel. And we would also return somewhere near even $10 million out of the budget. When we put all those things together, we didn't feel that it was prudent to really start going back to another process and investing in more consultants to look at what the others might be. That option is still open to us, but from our own knowledge, we think it's unlikely to find anything that we would be able to use, and if we did, it would be very expensive and high risk. So, and on that basis, we didn't have the expertise to go any further with carbon. We'd have to get consultants to do it.
Thank you, Councilors. Laura, you might not be the right person to ask the question, but bio-solid sites suggest to me that it's from plant matter, food, those things that we put inside ourselves that end up down the treatment station. So, in terms of fossil carbon, which is a big issue for everybody, and releasing more carbon into our atmosphere from fossil fuels, this would have a degree of carbon neutral content, would it not? If it's grown, it's come from something that has been grown. It's a question of carbon and burning, releasing carbon?
Just in terms of clarity of what we're dealing with, bio-solids are effectively the bugs that eat human waste and other waste, but that's what they're left over with. But they're biological matter. The primary concern from a greenhouse gas point of view is that the incinerators does emit nitrogen dioxide. So, it's that, as from a greenhouse gas perspective, our discharge consent does have discharge limit, nitrogen dioxide on it, and we do periodically monitor to ensure we're within that consent limit.
Councilor. The discharge consent has been granted for 35 years. It's possible, dear or say likely, that beneficial reuse technologies may become visible a long before then. I guess my question is, what kind of commitment can we get to ongoing investigations? Or how regularly can we look into these sorts of, I'm aware that consultancy fees need to be factored in this as well, but I don't want, like, 34 years for any plan to decide what we're going to do next. So, what, where to from here in terms of tracking?
So, in terms of, I'm part of our roles generally, is keeping a view on what's going on in the industry, whether that's through conferences and reading and so on and so forth. So, you know, when new technologies pop up, certainly once they start to gain any form of traction, and, you know, so they're not one research paper, we would know that those things are starting to gain traction. There are certainly too many processes that have just started being trialled within New Zealand. We would be watching those trials with interest. So, it really is a question of when does something come to the point that we think it's worth us having a serious look at, that would trigger a process to bring that back, to say, look, there's something else out there. Do we want to start spending money to see whether or not that's better than what we've got?
And just also, what is the life cycle of the incinerator?
Well, obviously with proper renewables management, obviously it's a maintenance item, basically the life of the incinerator is infinite, there's probably no time. It's just a piece of equipment, not anything else, and you replace it. So, after 10 years, you may have, it turns out to be a bit new, you might even replace a piece, replace over the years as maintenance requirements.
I guess following up on the monitoring of the discharge, I think you said that we are, so far we are within limits on the C5 conditions for, is that correct?
Yes, I'm always happy.
Well under or?
Well under. The testing actually takes place immediately after incineration, but we then actually put all the overs, oh, sorry, you know, the emissions from the incinerator go through the bio-them, so we're well under our consent limits by the time it actually disturbs. Councilor.
I can endorse the odor problems being a neighbour of the Tahuna wastewater. They have dramatically improved in the last little while. Is this taking up, probably Brian Turner was looking at two or three years ago, and when he was talking about the problem?
It will be a continuation of what Brian's been doing, which particular conversation you have with?
No, it was in the OT, and there was public knowledge then what he was trying to do. Because I guess globally, there must be somebody making this work.
So, the key difference for us and for New Zealand, and I was having a look back at some of the things that happen in the UK, is the lack of land bank and the ability to put it to agricultural lands. Other parts of the world, and my particular experiences in the UK, are that huge amount of effort go to keep the ability to go to agriculture, to the extent that my previous employer has just invested heavily into steam pasteurisation plants, so they're now steam pasteurising bio-solids so that they can put it to agricultural land. And they also invest heavily both in government lobbying and marketing to ensure that supermarkets will still have set products that have been grown on land that's had bio-solids. Fonterra are very strong on the fact that that's not good for their brand. There is work going on through Water New Zealand to try and look at how we can progress this further nationally. But for New Zealand at this point in time, land disposal, other than for non-ecocultural, agricultural type uses, is just simply an error, and that does make a difference.
Then you talk about upgrading the Tahuna incineration. The previous energy manager had some plans on that, or thoughts on that. Were they shared, or was it that was shared?
Yeah, absolutely, and some of that was looked at in terms of, as we talked about, we have looked at the possibility of taking some of the sludge to Moana, but it really doesn't look like a particular viable option. We have looked at whether or not we can make better use of the excess energy being generated by the incinerator. So, we already use it to heat the plant buildings. With this method, what we'll actually be doing is using it to self-generate, to keep the incinerator not requiring additional fuel. But the work that's being done on it basically demonstrates there's not viable amounts of wasted energy left over that we could actually use for other commercial purposes.
I won't draw on this, but can I, can you explain to me that issue, the statement you made twice about Fonterra opposition to take, do they prohibit taking milk from farmers who distribute bio-human bio-solids on their land? Is it actually prohibition, or are they unliking, or is there a clinical issue?
Yes.
They won't take milk from land that's had human bio-solids?
And it's, I mean, it's, this is a global phenomenon, and it is purely a marketing?
Because it's bad for their brands?
It's a marketing issue rather than helping?
It's not bad for their brand, you're allowed the cattle to drop waste in rivers.
Councilor Lord, you had some observations?
I was just going to say, as a supplier, the rule changed a few years ago. Prior to that, we could discharge from our, at least the waste we had, the city tanks we were able to discharge from, and now we don't.
I do just need to draw people's attention, there is one typographical error in the report in terms of the option to loan servicing costs. They are overstated by $400,000, but the numbers that are actually in the budget spreadsheets are correct. So, it is purely a typographical error, but that was raised as a question.
Just to clarify, Laura, what's the change?
So, the, under option two, the comparison, option two, 12.21.
12.21.
12.21, debt servicing costs for option two, should be $3.9 million. But we have checked, and the correct number has been carried through into the actual budget spreadsheet, it's million in the report.
Any further questions? Can you make that?
Well, I've just got a tweaked motion.
Tweak the recommendation?
Yeah, the recommendation, and I'll get you to move my tweaked version to see if I can get the bookwork. So, there's just the tweak part, so one and three would be the same. And I'm suggesting altering two to read that Council endorse the upgrade of the Tahuna incinerator, including the facility for removal of combustion ash from the cooling unit, subject to highly low due diligence on energy options and emissions in conjunction with energy plan staff. And by that, I don't mean going up to consultants, I understand that we've got a new staff, there's also been a policy team that has expertise in energy, and we'll just be able to run through the conversation that I've had and have with you guys.
Just, my understanding that's already been done, the energy manager was involved in the project all the way through. I'm not aware of any issues in terms of that, but, and the project here, as you can see, with the energy, previous energy managers, and he's involved, and Brian Turner and everything else, this is a combination of quite a bit of work, that is kind of, most of these issues are part of it.
You know, I had a suggestion, perhaps, that if this were to say, subject to ongoing examination of the options, this is a long project, and if something had gone on, this is unchangeable.
This is a, if we get the approval, other than through the general review of what's going on in a later project, to say, okay, we can do that, I mean, whatever. But in terms of this, if we get the go-ahead to go and do it, we would be going to start constructing those elements, and that would be locked in. I guess also from a practical point of view, the sooner we can get clarity, the sooner we can actually get the ash recycling part in and stop burning fuel and moving trucks around the place.
I'm happy to all of it, my concerns only that we're partway through the development of an energy plan, that there has been significant staff changeover in the past few months with that. It's not clear to me, yeah, there has been conversations with the plan or the staff doing the energy plan, and it does, but we need applications for the development of that.
You're moving this, Councilor, to Paris, are you happy?
I'm happy to incorporate the ruling that Dr Vidroes suggested, which was subject to ongoing?
Subject to ongoing examination.
I just said quickly to Maria about the, so it's the new senior policy member who has energy expertise in his background. So, this is, she's had this discussion, this is partly specialised, one, completely consultancy work on this, this is with a special lead of assistance particularly. So, I guess the bit that would cause some stresses, subject to, because you need to go on and build this, it's more like bearing in mind that we will continue to look around before we add energy options over time. And, you know, when this is, in due time, we may well come back to you with a new plan.
Well, it will be that, in that case, that this isn't required. My concern, and I remain of the concern, that we are developing an energy plan as a city, that there is a need for all departments to be involved in the discussions around that, that there is a need for all of us to be aware of the carbon emissions that we're locking our city into. And it's not 100% unique, through this, or assuming in this report, I have had some clarity through my discussions throughout, but it is not at the level at which I feel particularly comfortable as a governance member endorsing recommendations as we have them in the document. So, that's, that's just where I'm sitting. Having heard that from Maria, and I don't think that it's worth going into a whole load of consultation work around it, I'm happy to revert to the original question.
So, in terms of process, you're moving your original motion?
I could get someone else to move them frankly, because I'm slightly uncomfortable with them.
Move Councilor Staines, second, is there a second for the, Councilor Lord, second now, discussion?
Discussion, councillor Stan, do you want to speak to that?
Councillor... I just wanna make a comment and follow on from what the councillor have said. And I might be being a bit naive here, but in quite rightly questions, the staff in that they should be looking at further options. But I, I mean, am I right in assuming that the staff would always look for the best, practice the best options in a situation like this, where we're spending a lot of funds and it's in the, in changing technology? I would, I have an expectation as a councillor that staff will always look at this sort of, at new technology.
Right, let's take this to this. This is the, these are the recommendations on page 12.17.
I took that as a question, you can all answer that all.
Can I say that in the title of the lobby of the council, starting with the Tohono waste upgrade, stage one, stage two, there have been at least two, if not three, clear processes that I can think of involved around exploring world-class options for both the water stream, treatment of water stream and the sludge stream. Doing a RFP on one occasion during the development of the process. There'd been a, used to be a lot of time with consultants around options for dealing with both the water stream and the sludge stream. This isn't something that hasn't been, come through, except for a very, very long process of exploring all known options in the world. So we can keep looking, but yet to this point, there's been enormous amount of work considering a wide range of options in the world.
And that's always been my belief and if we continue to do so, hey, I'm happy. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Just to make a comment, that the discussion we were having was not simply about whether this was the best option. It was about whether there was interest or that it was pertinent to more than one area and how, what were the synergies were between those.
Yeah, that's the second part of the resolution that I was gonna capture.
That's not, that's not the resolution originally we've been at. So is there any further discussion? I'll put it all out in place, please say, I guess, carry. Thank you, Laura. So the next report is options for portable water supply. This is your big folder page, it's 12.23 to 12.27. Are you still at Laura? Questions on this report, councillor?
Who wants to dip their toe in the mud?
Councillor Zed.
In option one, portable filters, for a dollar, it's a hundred dollars and then it goes on to say most plannably effective. Can you, can one buy a portable water filter for around a hundred dollars and is it absolutely effective? I wasn't asking, I was at the top.
Yes, we believe, you know, this is from the work we looked at, there are people out there marketing them for a hundred dollars. There was a reason we put most plannably effective, we haven't independently validated whether they actually work. But they do have that in their...
They have a guarantee of some sort.
They have that in their information to say that's what they do. But we have not done any independent testing to validate that.
I mean, it's a very important point as far as I'm concerned, because if that's the answer and that's, and they guarantee it, can and will, in my view, there's no, there's no debate at all, but we'll see.
I find, hopefully, there'll be no debate there anyway.
I have to declare a conflict of interest in that I've been flogging them since 1987 mainly for mates. But there is a filter available, it's made by Omni Pure and Yarles. It's sold by two different companies here in New Zealand, one with the contamination problem, another one with the, oh, people up in Mornington, Taylor, Taylor Periodic. It's called a KDF GAC type filter. It has a university of a tago certification with it that shows the removal of chlorine detergent pesticide, lead element and fluoride at market rate, fluoride to about 98%. The current retail for it is $86, virtual cartridge itself. By the time you get your tap kit and everything else, you're usually up for a couple of hundred. So just to give a factual answer, those prices have been coming down a lot. They used to be at least $300. They are available and...
Do you have your order book here?
There is, sorry. And I'm not looking for new customers, I look after my mates.
Right.
Councillor, can I just say that they all need fine yelling filters too, isn't that?
Yeah, you find that $86 cartridge in a residential situation usually lasts a couple of years. So it's 50 fancy years, say, tops to run.
Any further questions? Okay. Is someone applying to move?
Sorry, I do, yes, I do have a question. And there is, did staff look into the option of installing one of those filtering systems in a community hall or similar premises?
I guess that would be a variation on the ones of, 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 maybe, because it's a scale. If we've got many, you could put it to a municipal or similar, which would potentially reduce the cost for that. So we didn't have any detail.
Councillor Lord.
I would just have a converted option of option one.
So I'll second that. So you're moving on that option, because the recommendation is that we, there's no recommendation of such, I'm sorry, I know.
And I'm sitting back if you don't mind.
So councillor Lord is moving that preferred option for a further investigation is option one, second councillor Benson Pope and the other councillor, Alice, is sitting back as he sees the complete. Any discussion on this?
Well, it's not so much a kind of discussion as a, maybe it's a rhetorical question. But it is that if we were looking at encouraging or potentially encouraging individual customers to install point-of-use filters and one of the options is part of that, one of the sub-options was subsidised that, I would suggest that a cheaper option probably would be installing one point-of-use filter at some public location, somewhere in the city, which was accessible, say, the municipal lane toilets, for example, which are manned during the day, you can go over there, very public spodge. I would have thought that that probably would be a cheaper option than subsidising portable filters for everybody.
Well, that needs to give them that they're something, we're going to subsidise in this soon, aren't we?
Just to check out a resolution, option one without subsidisation or option one with subsidisation. Want to say there's subsidisation?
Okay, so let's be clear, the York Council's saying that here. So let's say to be clear that the, that the, the motion is that, resolution is that councillor indicated the preferred option is to encourage customers to choose and pay themselves to remove fluoride from the point-of-use filter.
Well, speaking to that, I may, personally speaking, I have no concerns about my health, because I, and I think that we don't have much choice about to take the scientific consensus, want to be the term on the matter. But I did see, and as many of us over here this time last year saw, a lot, or a significant number of people come forward to us and explain the impact that they felt that it was having on them. And certainly, my observation was that it was affecting their wellbeing in the sense that they were quite emotionally upset about it. It was, I don't know how widespread it is throughout that community, but I think we hear something like 34 submissions. It was the largest number of submissions that we've received in any country. And at a cost of $400 plus $50 a year, we could potentially alleviate those concerns for those people. Now, the point will be made by people speaking subsequent to me, I imagine that there is already space for tap. That is true, but it is not on a public transport route, which is difficult for some people, especially people with kids or people without public, without private transport. And to me, it doesn't seem like a large amount to alleviate the concerns of a number of residents. That would be my observation and what I would throw into the mix. Would hear my police, you?
Councillor Stan.
I sympathise with councillor McTavish. However, this puts the councillor in a situation where everybody who feels that they, if they say, oh, fluoride's in my body, I want subsidy, could expose us to a very large cost. I, I personally think that if someone proved to the medical practitioner that their health is being harmed and there should be the ability in the health system for them to get a work done, if that is the case. You know, as we pointed out, councillor McTavish, the science that overwhelmingly we are taking as good science indicates that lead and fluoride that are being put in the water are not harmful. And so those people who believe they are being harmed, I'm not saying they aren't, but they must be well outside the normal spectrum. And there are always people who have, who are out in that position where they feel a particular substance is harming their body habit, things like a malgane filling or some people are fine with sensitive and I accept that that might well be the case. But, but to put, if we end up with a subsidy scheme through council, we, we do open ourselves up to having to be the judge of whether that person is of, of that group or not, which I think is something that as a councillor, we are not capable of doing. So I'm not quite sure where the direction would be.
Can I note that the, the resolution, the motion is the law's...
If I may make a statement to councillor, just to clarify what I was saying, because it seems I've given wrong me to the set. I wasn't endorsing the subsidy scheme for individuals by industry imagination. What I was endorsing was the idea that we might, as a council, invest a $100 cost in a filter, put it in an existing facility that was already manned and pay a $50 replacement fee on the filter you've reached. That's what I was thinking.
Councillor Zed. This is, our decision will go into the draft annual plan. And so there's no question in my mind, there will be a number of people will still come in and submit if this resolution does go through. But I think it is a very modest sum for, for us to expect our taxpayers to pay. They want to rid themselves of taking in fluoride when they, when through their, through their, our water system. So I don't think it's an onerous fee that we're asking someone to pay. But I have no doubt that we'll, the submitters come in through the annual plan process. And if they, and one of the things that does concern me is the effectiveness of these filters. That is a concern. But I have no doubt that the submitters will do the homework on that and point out that whether we're right or wrong during the annual plan hearing. So I support this absolutely. I feel with regards to having a, well, there's no, there's no point in debating the issue of the tap, because that's something we may come around to at a later date, once we hear what the submitters have got to say. But I think this is a start for our annual plan, for our draft annual plan.
Councillor Hawke. My understanding is that the Ministry of Health are particularly forthcoming in offering guidance to local authorities on this issue, either regulatory or otherwise. I guess what I'm seeking assurance from staff that we will continue to seek input from central government on what is essentially a public health policy issue and one that I believe should be left up to local authorities to decide on a case-by-case basis.
So, I mean, the Ministry of Health offer a clue in that position, they do provide, as you said, healthcare points in terms of providing information to councils. Where they do not intervene is about council's decision, which is currently, as the current legislation, it is council's decision as to whether or not it uses fluoride. So certainly from a scientific standpoint, they are all happy to provide that, but they do have a specific decision and will continue to engage with them in terms of any, any changes to that position. Advice, advice, councillor, what?
Councillor Lord.
Look, just in part of the comment to that, this is not a debate about whether we move fluoride from water. This is a debate about whether we can die non-prolative or throughout the city. And this motion as it stands clearly says that we won't do that, we encourage those people. But one thing councillor McTavish did make a comment about the 36, was it, at last his annual plan? I just would, I mean, since I announced that I was gonna stand for council, I think they've all lobbied me, the whole 36 of them. And what I would make is that they are a very organised lobby and that in fact does not reflect necessarily the fact that you get 36 submissions does not necessarily reflect what the bulk of the population feel. So my feeling is I think this is a good option, deals with the problem. There was also this big spike cap as to going in and presenting, but I mean, that's actually the reality of this family that we're really worried about. And most houses, I mean, I own a number of houses, have all got those water filters and all the challenges here. So it's just, I'm sure it's not that difficult for people that are really worried about it.
Councillor, why?
I would actually think if I was the seller of water filters and looking at what maybe in the OT or the media tomorrow, I'd be running a business, I'd be coming to the DCC pretty smartly and saying, oh, sponsor a tap, to show you how good my water filters are. So I would encourage any companies nationally or whatever to bring the DCC tomorrow and say, so, community taps around the city.
Councillor Thomas. Look, I actually get a vote against this motion and encourage others to do likewise. I cannot see the point of voting for a motion that's actually a motion to do nothing. And effectively, that's what we're doing. So why would you even move a motion to do nothing? I think that if we're, if it's, if we're not going to do anything, then just leave things as they are. But I do believe, despite the fact that I am a supporter of adding fluoride to water until such time as the science tells me otherwise, that I've been a critic of those who should be providing us with the science, not doing their job well enough. And that I've got an open mind about, the reality is, is one of the complaints is that this is a medication in a sense that is being applied without choice. Now, I think that if you look at the cost of being able to put a couple of mass, what do you call them? I've got glasses on now, but in option two, to do that in a couple of places. And I'm not clear at all how much of that cost is actually around the notion that if we did it, we have to provide, you know, sort of lay-by facilities and muddy pedestrian crossings and a roof in case they get wet and everything else, or whether it's actually just to provide the filter. But I would have thought that there were any number of places around the city where we could just provide the filter. If you look at the people queuing up at Spades, it does not overwhelm the city infrastructure. And with all due respect to checking public transport, I can't see people waiting there for things on the bus, but maybe they will. I just, I think that we should at least look at this and we should look at what's the cost of doing it at a minimal cost in a couple of places around the city. And we provide those who have a genuine concern, whether I think it's misplaced or otherwise, with an option at, I think, very little cost if we just do it in a very simple way now. So I'm gonna vote against it and if it's lost, then I will move further investigation in option two for the reasons I've just identified. in option two for the reasons I've just identified.
Well, I'll speak to this. I think to some extent, my feelings about this rely on the objectivity of the evidence. So I would, it's all refined. And I take the Counselor Thomas's point that some of the agencies with a view on or with expertise in this haven't made their views as clear as they could. But then maybe we had to ask them, and we said we were going to ask them. And I think on executive, chief executive's assurance that we will formally ask the National Fluoride Information Service. And I might point out the local dental store, who have pediatric orthodontists, probably the best in the country with the experience. So at least we should be asking them what their experiences we've got there in dental store in the country here. There must be a data base of evidence here to ask, that's the first thing. And on that, assuming, and I'm interested in what their advice is, but as Laura's pointed out, the advice we've got so far is that overwhelmingly, the amount of fluoride that comes in order is not harmful. So if that's the case, the people who perceive that they are affected by it are either a very small minority or they're mistaken. And I don't think that we, as a council, are obligated to provide a service for a very small minority of people, whether they're right or wrong in this regard. Someone came along here and said they were being abducted by aliens, would we put in alien protection measures? So they may attempt to do that. So I will be, this may well be a motion to do nothing, I support it. Counselor Stans, do you wish to expel your right of reply? Or Counselor Law. Do you wish to expel your right of reply?
Look, I think the last couple of comments are interesting. I think the motion is ready for you. I don't agree with the fact that it's a motion to do nothing because there's been a paper presented, which is either going to go on the plan or not and be consulted on. And I think this gives a clear view of its carryout, what the position of the council is. I think it's rather ironic when we spend millions producing a total water supply for customers and put in what we think is appropriate on whatever advice. And by the way, when I look at the Department of Health website, it's pretty unequivocal about the benefits of fluoride and professes that our own dental store are equally unequivocal and they certainly should be consulted. But I'm amused by the, what I think is a romantically elegant but impractical suggestion of putting a filter or a few filters here and there as we return to the dark ages that people have to come on their donkey with their bucket to collect the water. And it wouldn't be if it was subscribed as a space cap, something that I believe many people would take up. If these filters are as effective as we are told and the university says they are, and they're available at that level, then people, then a central source would be very little use when they could have one for their cost in their own home. And so I think, I think this is the desirable course of action.
Counselor Law.
Look, I think you put about perfectly, yes, I accept your. Except the alien, I don't know if Counselor Buzin's comment you'll serve, but he said that we'll just be in the back, put the shout out, eventually they're adapted. So that was very good.
All right, the motion is on the board. I'm going to quote all those in place, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
It's carried. Just be with me while I look at it, we need another. So I'll move from the chair. The three recommendations in this case relating to all local waste services, second to Counselor James, the discussion. I'll put it all over the place, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Carried.
We move down to section six, city planning. And the first report is heritage incentives. And that is the 12.29, 12.46. Welcome, Lenny, Anna. The report, as I said, Counselors, is from 12.29, heritage incentives in the first instance. Do you want to preface question time with any context? Do you need any of your?
I'll let Lenny do the preface, but I'll just point out, if anyone's spotted it, the report refers to the fact that last year and this year we had some additional money for heritage support. So in this year, a year of 9K, and that, if you look at budgets, it looks like there's no difference. And the reason for that is that heritage support money that we had this year, which is targeted around Lower Princess Street, was actually put against amenity support rather than heritage support. So anyone that picked up that, that's the explanation. But all that, Lenny's report.
The only other thing about that there is there are a couple of typos in the report on page 7 or 18, I'm not sure what number it is in yours. 12.35 refers to 80K, the actual budget there is 82K. And the advantage there, it says there's a budget saving from 12, 13, 14 here. There isn't actually, because we've actually spent all that money this year. So there's actually no further budget from 2014. So it would be a cost neutral option, would be the advantage. And an option two also refers to 80 rather than 82. So the correct figure should be 82.
Questions, Counselors? Counselor McTavish.
Well, essentially, it does pertain to this report that I would like their opinion on this small building that Lee, Counselor Lewis, referred to this morning, named it, Brema, Brema, Brema Cottage. Yeah, okay, so.
I've prepared something here already. I've been approached about this a couple of times before. I'm ambivalent towards it, I don't really have a feeling either way. The two things I would note is that there's already such a large amount of upgrade work needed at the gasworks, I just worry about taking on another one without reemphasising that that probably will have long-term effects on the other buildings of the gasworks as well. And the second would just be that there is a bit of a collecting culture around the gasworks and part of the need for that place to develop is a good visitor attraction in future. It's not my area of expertise, but I just want to be sure that they're taking on something that is core to the story they need to tell there and not just something that looks like a really good opportunity. And that's something I don't have a feel for, with how integral it is to it. So my main concerns are really around that cost aspect and how that might impact other work that, on core buildings of the gasworks that really needs to get underway.
And just to put in context, we left that on the table. And once we're dealt with this, I'm happy for you, Counselor Buzin, as you put your motion to resurrect it. But we'll deal with this particular report first, if that's okay, and then.
On the gasworks, we're just waiting for the pilot to come in. And May, if you don't mind, through tomorrow, he's trying to get from the gasworks museum an indication that the majority of the board actually want to do this before we come back to you. Until we've got that in writing, we'd be a little low to come back halfway. So May, perhaps a bit more.
Okay, returning to this report, having Mr. Jim, give the casualty. Well, I'd like to, first of all, so there's a certain elegant irony in us discussing this and the subsequent reports of this building. Because the history of this authority in terms of heritage protection is certainly as good as any local authority in the country, as it should be, given the city that we live in. And I'm pleased that both, in other planning documents over the last couple of triennia of this council and this capital, through previous councils, have recognised the importance of that heritage and its value to residents and visitors alike. And this council, of course, is not just in buildings like this and the railway station and the Crown Plaza building, which many of you will have forgotten, but in constant work to protect our built heritage. And I think it's appropriate, and I can do this as an outsider to the previous council, to compliment the current staff, in particular the urban planner, for this extraordinary success of the work that's happened in the heritage in the warehouse precinct, not just Lenny, but his associates and seniors and juniors and so on. I don't think many years ago, even before the 50s, there were people that had anticipated what we see down there now and how that work has happened and that result is in place, given the portraing amounts of financial support from this council, it is a miracle, if there is such a thing. Clearly, there are some developers with, and owners with real vision. And whatever the dynamic between this council and its staff and those people is, it should be encouraged. And I think these reports, if I could come to that finally, provide us with a really good basis for discussion in the community as part of the annual plan process about exactly what we need to do as a community, as an Indian community, to support the built heritage that we have. Because the challenges don't just relate to the age of that heritage through value, they also relate to the issues post-Christ church and post-sinn, actually, which touching the whole country in terms of enormous challenges about built heritage protection, in terms of earthquake risk and earthquake safety. The simultaneous overreaction by many parts of the community, including the central government, in my view, to the risk issues that could be much better managed. And on top of those two, appalling behaviour by elements in the insurance industry about the provision of cover. And I think the challenges for our property owners and ourselves in relation to heritage are going to become increasingly apparent and increasingly north and north as time goes on. And that is not just in England. And it's not just on Maroo or Timaru, it's the whole of this country. And so I think this is an issue that is going to keep moving up the agenda in terms of prominence. And so I'm pleased to see these reports, this one then, that follows on what we have done, essentially, and what options, or some of the options available to us. I'm sure we will get a lot of submissions from owners and developers and interested people about these issues as part of the annual plan that will enable us to consider which direction we follow and which options, if any, and how much funding we can put in this direction. And I want to repeat my thanks to the people who produce this report.
Just second, guidance, really, you wish of the, this is one area that I would like to see us consider some additional funding and particularly in relation to the targeted area, which Anna pointed out there is no provision for in the new year. However, I find it difficult to make any recommendation as to the magnitude of that without having reports around, for example, the discussions that we had about the stadium this morning. So is it something that we can, is your recommendation that we part any discussion about the magnitude of a budget inclusion until after we've had a information about how we might deal with the stadium issue? Or do you want to consider the budget allocation now?
I don't think, and I'm saying to correct obviously, I've got this right, I don't think we need to specify a quantum. I think that if the council is of mind to increase spending in this area, then you choose the option, the consultation that will facilitate that. Because, well, the recommendation says, is choose an option that doesn't get a particular effect. And then the quality can be determined at the time we know more about our work on it.
It might be helpful to consider, we've spoken to the auditor about this, who audits our accounts. He's perfectly comfortable about us going forward with a budget, with the current stadium budget in place, even though we know that they will not meet those revenue targets. And with written words around the review that is being undertaken and what we will be putting in place. And we do have some thoughts about what you might call playing the, what we will be doing to give ourselves some, to give you some further headroom if the change process that we need to put in place for the stadium is not able to be kept up from the movement of the lot, if you would imagine. How we will cover that through. And we do have, we do have some thoughts about it. So we have some comfort that we can do that within the existing budget envelope. So given all of that, we can write that out. The auditor, Gemma, is comfortable about the budget going exactly as it is. So that may give you some comfort.
So what you're effectively saying, if I understand you rightly, Dr. Rose, is that the $600,000 of headroom, which you have identified in the budgets, remains $600,000 of headroom for us to choose one of those three options, which we should articulate this morning, even with the stadium considerations?
That's correct. So with the stadium considerations as they are, obviously, we get no intention of bringing you back an operating model that will cost the rate payers more to run than the current budget plus the amount, or as we start to get a clearer assessment of how much short they are of getting the revenue targets. So we will not be coming, and we need to work out how to cover that minimum as well as in the longer term, a couple of things like maintenance. We are doing that and we can, we can do that for the coming year, absolutely within the budget headroom that you have here in place. And we'll put some words around why we're bringing that back.
So your question, Counselor McTavish, was about the process.
Yeah, it was.
So to this, turning now to questions, if that's appropriate, on this report and then we move towards the motion of Counselor Thomas.
Just, it's a process question, really. I'm not quite sure, you were saying, well, we could move something that doesn't have a figure in it. But in essence, we'd have to have a figure that we're putting in.
I'm not sure that I, I'm not that I'm completely agree. What I'm saying is that if we, if the council's of mind to increase funding, then you choose the option that allows that, and then you might populate it with whatever figure you want. But the point is, you still have to start with an option, and then those are the given ones.
Because one of the things that we've done in the past is, if you like, to pencil in some figures and then come back and have a look at the end of it and say, well, where is this sitting in the list of priorities at all?
Exactly, and the motion that we passed right from the beginning saying anything we decide tentatively throughout the speaking can be amended at the end, exactly, it covers that eventually.
Well, I suggest we pencil in the 200 grand that I've been pushing for the last two years.
But we really put that, but can I return now to questions, materials? That's exactly, that answers Counselor Thomas's question, actually. If we go for that option, there's a need to be a figure in that, and then we sort of find that out. Mr. Jim, sorry. Just on that matter, it seems to me that we have two options. There's the status quo, and I don't think I'll come, your suggestion that that's actually quite good. We need to move on that. I'm just wondering if we couldn't say that our preference would be for either three or four, and then there's some quantum, quantity available, people look at. And as we start to populate budgets, then we can have an argument at a later date or people can tell us whether that's one or the other, just for desire. That's right, okay. Counselor Buzin, Counselor Stans.
Well, I'm thinking on the same lines as Counselor Vincent Pope. And the question I was going to ask is, in option three, do I know figures here? And it's like, hey, we can go with this, it's going to be a improvement on what we had. And there's actually a sub-option in there as well. So can, I just have a sort of a brief explanation as to how you see that working? To me, it's sort of like a, something that would happen incrementally. But nonetheless, we still have to have some funding put aside. Otherwise, you know, if we have ceiling on it, that would, well, we're going to have to put some funds towards it. And what are they, what's that level? Anything more than what we have, I guess. But at least an option four, is that what we're saying? Is that what you were saying?
To a degree, what I was really kind of covering up there was that option of choosing an amount, but also not signalling that it's an ongoing commitment, that we could say we're doing it this year and then, you know, we'll see how it goes. If we're still getting good. if we're still getting good results off it, then it might be something again we consider next year, but not to set up that expectation that it's an ongoing commitment from the council.
Yeah, I'd like, my view is that we should be doing more than what we're doing. But, you know, how do we, how do we translate that into our budget, when we haven't got a, when we haven't got a figure?
Well, I think the 90K has worked exceptionally well this year for the area-based amount. That's been a good point, we've got about nine projects out of that. And that feels like a comfortable amount in terms of a year's work. And for the Heritage Fund, any increases is valuable. Where we were spending before was around that 150 to 200 mark, when we had the money to spend down from the excess in previous years. And each year, we've sort of had applications that could take us to that level.
Council, stand.
Yeah, that's all right.
It seems to me that perhaps, in response to the council's events, I guess, following on from that question, that one of the things as a, as a council we need to know is what is the appetite of our rate payers in this area? So I'd like to think that we, we went to consultation with perhaps option three, with some indicative rate, rate payer costs. So taking that on to the average household, whatever that we apply, this is around, you know, 100,000, 200,000, 300,000, what would lead to the house, the average household in terms of increased rates? Because effectively, even if we funded out of the gap between 2.5 and 3, it is a rate impact. And also, then perhaps have start work on option four for consideration and consultation in the LTP. So that might then give us the opportunity to look at whether we have an increasing amount, building a greater fund to deal with these issues going forwards as part of our, our tenure plan. So I, I haven't got a resolution, but I think somewhere in there where we, we get this year a good indication of what is the appetite, we stimulate our rate payers to make submission, and then from there, we get a feel that will enable us to maybe increase for one year period, but also prepare for a more significant piece of consultation on a plan that, that actually looks at more significantly in the LTP.
Councillor Paul. I think before this goes out for public consultation, I think it's, could be valuable for our community, for them to have a better understanding of, of what the council spends in these areas has helped enable, in terms of their overall projects, budgets, I've had informal consultations with Dr. Hazen and the members of the committee, then, because if you look at it as, from an economic development angle, for what we are contributing, and how much is being spent in developing this, and so on and so forth. And I just wonder, and I'm aware of the commercial sensitivity issues, and I don't know how, how possible that is, but can you speak to that perhaps as an option?
Yeah, I ran some figures yesterday, just going back to the grant applications that we had in terms of what people had specified with their, their projected costs of their projects. And sometimes that was for the entire project, sometimes that was just for a component of the project that they're applying funding for. And I found that I can actually get that data relatively easily. So we can come up with a number of, you know, we've given X hundreds of thousands, and actually it's enabled X millions of dollars of work, we can come up with that figure. How robust that figure is, like, you know, but it gives people an indication that, that what we're giving is still only a minor percentage of, you know, I think a couple on the list that we have here, we gave them, remember like the A D instruments on that, I think I got 15,000 from the Heritage Fund, that's a $6 million project.
The second question I just want to ask around the concept of icon projects, and as you've rightly pointed out in this report, it's potentially a reasonably political decision as to what gets classified as an icon project in a religious insinuations aside. I just wonder what, if any, models exist for such an approach that we could be using to inform, because I think the robustness of that process, I think has some bearing on how coverable that might be as an option, rather than just be a complete blunt line, yeah, all the time.
Yeah, I've already had a number of calls from people this week who have icon projects that want to put on the list. Yeah, that would be something I'd have to look into, but I think, I think in the past, we've, we've run things and discussions around what are those iconic buildings that the community would come forward and say, these are the top 10 or whatever around the city that we'd like to see happen. There is still a challenge in that, that a number of those buildings will be church buildings, that some people have that such a role, should we be giving money to churches? That potentially could be funding this themselves. So I think it will come down to political decisions, but we're certainly going to have to, like, do a bit more work around who else has done some work on this.
Do you, I mean, if this were to be adopted for the 2014, 15 year, that you complement that, that could be done in time for the, any consultation process?
When you go out with LTP. Yeah, I believe so. I believe we can come up with some guidelines here.
Councillor Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. In light of what Dr. Hazen's saying here today, and in light of also of the results we've had from his work, I'd certainly be supporting a moderate increase anyway, whether it's option three, I don't know what the figures are, but option four, I still think is within, is still moderate probably, given the scut, given the challenge that we have out there, and the buildings that we know need some, some renovation. And so option four is 300,000 plus 70,000 of rates relief. And that's, for a city that has such a burnt heritage as ours, I mean, it doesn't seem too much to me. But I'd love to see, however, what, what council stands at option four, comparative working of the impact on the rates, and to see how that, how that affects 2.5.
Councillor Paul. Well, I can see, given the short term, is all these earthquake homegoing, all the reports have to be done, achieved, and a lot of the star buildings are going to come under category reasons, is going to be a lot more ground done for it.
Yeah, well, the only question that I had around that was, as I understand the draft legislation, where would you think that we build for those? And I don't suppose that we've made any provision in the budget for that, because we're hoping that the government will see the light. Is that correct?
That's correct. At the moment, the legislation that went forward in terms of its first reading was really unclear in terms of where those costs will sit. It basically said that the chief executive of MV would develop a process to help this would occur. Clearly, we still have some concerns about that, and so we're hoping to go to a select committee to discuss those. We haven't included anything in this year's budget on the basis that we think that they couldn't get the legislation in place for the next annual plan, long-term plan anyway. And we will be coming back with a proposal to council to extend out our timeframe that we have currently, that finishes in July this year, for another year to give people more time to get those assessments in. But that should also dovetail nicely with when government legislation does become active in 2015. But it is something to be aware of, that if we do get, if we are given the responsibility of having to undertake all those assessments, it's an even larger number of assessments than we currently have requirements for, because we only assess buildings or require building. I just look at them pre-76, the current government legislation talks about pre-2005, so it introduces a, a large number of buildings. So we do have some concerns around that.
Okay. Council stands, I understand, oh, you're sharing a motion? It's on, on the wall, this is the second. Councillor White. Is he going to answer one? So, I don't know how we can do that.
I wanted to do this once before, and I got told at now, in certain terms, by councillor Brown, that it was not possible.
Councillor Brown is not here now.
I thought we actually had to go out with a, with a full.
Yeah, I think, I think councillor Brown is right, but I actually think that we do need to decide on one option, a preferred option for the purpose of the consultation under the LDA. So put one of the three figures, put it in the budget, and then you can settle on all three.
Yeah, that was it. Yes, but which would probably mean additional 100,000. But the reason that I scraped it out was to get a better, a better feel from our community, whether or not get moving in the LTP year to introduce the icons, so get that funded up significantly. So, you know, really, as a city, this is one of our biggest issues. And from an economic development perspective view, it has some really significant impacts. But on the other side, it has really significant opportunities. If we're not doing anything with these buildings, we're going to lose them, it'll make our city a worse place. It may well end up with property owners demolishing buildings and disappearing out of town, or just abandoning buildings. So that has an economic impact, negative impact. On the other side, if, if we can retain our position as the heritage city, then that can be part of our, what we are as a city, and, and help us achieve our economic goals as a result. So I think it's one that our community needs, needs to give us some feedback on. And we need to give them enough information to actually enable them to make a, to give us that feedback, and give us the confidence to either say, well, our community is just not interested in heritage buildings, or yes, it is, and, and as a community, we're prepared to contribute.
Councillor Paul, so that we're, you know, this paragraph we were at, it's been moved, it's been settled, chief executive is working on the way, but basically, we're having a last phase.
Yeah, no, no, I, I mean, I, I think what, what has been attempted to be done here is absolutely sensible. I did at the time, I wanted to do it too, but, but I think we kept, what I'm actually wanting to comment on is that a lot of this comes down to how we address the consultation document. Because it may be that we have to put an actual figure in here, but the consultation document, I would have thought, we have a little more freedom to do, because it's addressing our draft annual plan, and it can also address where we have real questions that we would like feedback on, and emphasize that. So I just hope that we might think about it more in that way, rather than just treating it as a summary of the, of the annual plan.
Councillor Paul.
I think it's a very sensible way of doing it, and, and because, you know, when we're debating issues around the annual plan, it is a draft plan, and what happens is we sometimes debate an issue for, or at length, people give their views on it, then it goes out for a public consultation, comes back, and we re-litigate it all again. So I think this is, this is giving an options that people will submit on, and then we can have this substantive debate when we get the, the feedback from the submitters. I think it's a very good way of doing it, and I'm glad councillor Brown is here.
Well, I, I guess I have a question of, of council stands, or perhaps of him. And that is that whilst it's all very well to identify that we may wish to put in the order of 100,000, 200, or 300 into a heritage budget, there are many ways that can be cut. And my sense is that we should be going up to the public saying either we would like to put an additional 50,000 into the Heritage Fund and retain 50,000 for a targeted scheme, or that we wish to put, what I would be advocating for, which would be an additional 100,000 into a targeted scheme, plus an additional 18,000 to top up the, the original Heritage Fund, or to that 100,000 dollar amount. But perhaps if there is a view around the council table that 100,000 isn't constantly, we would like to get, we could take some guidance from the Heritage Plan, as we hear from these that, would we speed apply? And indicate that is, is much in the, in the draft.
Councillor Benson.
I'm just struggling with the, the source of the numbers and the difference in what we're looking at in terms of this motion, in respect of the, the alternatives that come into play. But we've heard from, oh, essentially talking about more money, three lots are right, has a choice, but we're on four. But now we've got a mixture of everything, which I don't think is covered. And I'm just wondering if we could just, because the totals aren't really clearly visible, that's fair comment in the paper, if we just have a clear explanation of the total consultation, and the total package suggested as each of, part of each of the other options, and then we can focus our, and you can do that personally.
So currently, for the next, for 2014, 15, currently what we have is the 82,000 dollars for the Heritage Fund, and there would be the 50,000 dollars for the rates relief. Option two would look at both of those amounts, but it would add 90K for another geographically based reuse scheme. Option three, you would add that 90K, plus you would add maybe another 20K to the Heritage Fund, or 18K to bring it up to 100,000. So you have a budget of 100,000 for the Heritage Fund, and 90,000 for a targeted fund. Option four, you would increase the Heritage Fund to 200,000, area-based 100, and rates relief, so you'd add another 320,000 to the budget total. Oh, no, that's not quite right, that's not quite right. So you have another 118,000 for the Heritage Fund. 100 for the geographic, and 20 for additional for the rate relief. Excuse me, I've just split out in a store of my hand and I'm bleeding, so just slightly, not focusing on the numbers. Uh, 238. Do you want to have?
Glenn, to just give us, just reiterate the total for the cost. Put the table up, and then councillor Staines will talk us through what the, what he and the team came up with by way of clarification of the options.
No, the last, the last, but then option four is.
Now, do you want to have a take, and with Glenn explaining this, or how do you want to do it?
Do you, do you want to go, Tony? Yeah, I'll just briefly, option one would be, because we've got 82 there for the Heritage Fund, 50 for rates relief, and, but doesn't include any other funding for a targeted area. So this is, that's really an option that's taken us back a couple of years. Option two is the status quo, so we, or this, same as this year, so you've got 82 Heritage Fund, 50 for actually, and you contain a 90K targeted area fund for some part of the city. Option three, we increase the Heritage Fund slightly, rates relief stays as normal, and we have the targeted area. And option four increases the Heritage Fund further, each of the budgets go up slightly further.
Councillor Staines, if you could just say, go over your, your motion.
The, having discussed it with Glenn, we feel that consulting on option three, which is the plus 108,000, is a good mid-ground to consult on. There are some issues around some of the definitions and criteria that which we might, that we might need to strike out, given that we, we. which we might, that we might need to straighten out, given that we're increasing our funding. So we end up with an increase, a small increase in reality, I guess, because it's only gone from, we've put the 90 back in, but we could have taken out and we added a further 28,000, which is manageable within our budgets. But we would include for consultation, the options that we, that we had on either side, which was not put the 90 in, or actually put in 238, so that's the options one and four.
Two and four.
Two and four, sorry, two and four. And from there, we may get a good steer from our community that may, in the end, result in us saying, well, maybe, given the support, we take option four, or if the support isn't there, we might stay without preference or be forced down.
Speaker, so councillor Brown.
Councillor Sustain suggested that we go for an adoption to get a steer from the community. I don't believe that the community really has any idea of the importance and the multiplier effect, if you like, of this type of seed funding. If you look at the cost of doing up a building or earthquake-proofing a single building, it makes these figures here look, quite frankly, pathetic. What the Heritage Fund has been able to do on extremely small amounts of money is to encourage owners to spend very large amounts of money and to spend them in a way that is sympathetic to the heritage fabric of the city. That being the case, and if we all around this table understand that to be the case, what we need to be doing in terms of offering the public a steer or a preferred option is to go straight for option four. Recognizing that even option four is an incredibly constrained, tiny amount of money that will however, especially with Glenn's ability in talking a lot of these owners around, result in millions less spent on doing up our heritage buildings. So much as all I applaud, everything that councillor Sustain has said, but one bit that I can't agree with is, quite frankly, pissing them out, if he's talking about option three, let's go straight for option four as the preferred option and see what the community comes back with on that. I think it's the only significant option we can offer.
I'd like to thank previous speaker for his comments. I grew with the tide, actually. And I think the table is very helpful because if nothing else, it illustrates the paltry sums that we've, through the councils of the city, has contributed to this key area. That doesn't mean that what's been achieved is not important because, as I said earlier, it's been a wonderful set of results. And that said, an increase of 150,000 to the current budget is pretty conservative, actually, given the challenges. And I think it will be quite productive to advocate option four, the total of 317, given where we're at now. That's still not a very large sum, actually, for the amount we're talking about, especially as councillor Vanvis said in respect of the very large sums and the, a lot of the strengthening that people have undertaken and will continue to undertake. And so I think that may very well be the best way to proceed. And I would certainly support a motion and amendment to that federal verdict.
Well, the term of, is, if, either amendment or a subsequent motion and amendment. Councillor Sustain, if you'd like to go ahead.
I'm happy to amend the number to, to consult on option four.
Further, councillor Thompson.
I just wonder with, to the extent that we do incentivize something that wouldn't otherwise have happened, and it's arguable as to whether it would otherwise have happened, but assuming we have some success, and there we go. Do we make, is, do, I'm assuming that most of these works are actually requiring building consents? So there's actually a revenue offset potentially, if it's something that wouldn't otherwise have happened. I don't have the faintest idea how that revenue offset might compare with what we're handed back, but.
Can you point it, hold on.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I just want to point that out.
Councillor Hall, follow up from councillor Thompson, but it's not only that, it's increasing value, the revenue increase rate. You take from, when Mr. Vazapal, let's surrender. You take the, the increase in the building by the, one down in Crawford Street, you take the value of that before it was done up, you take the value now of the rate tag, surrender.
I would point out that one of the mechanisms, we will come to it in the next report, is to give the rate relief, so, albeit that we do get increased rates, it may be delayed.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot, but it's over the period, it's not the rate, it's not the rate increase the next year, it's over the period of building.
Absolutely. I'm in mixed minds, I'm absolutely in agreement with Lee there, with councillor Vanvis and councillor Bensley. I think all of us here cannot say anything against this in terms of, that's fantastic, but then when you think of that ADI building, $15,000 to take off, councillor Hall just said it's fantastic, between our investments. But I also just note that we are in very financial challenging times. And I would still be happy to just, although what we've got to remember is what we've achieved with 132, was it? No, 82 and 50, 132,000. To give them another 100, to go for 180, to go to 238 or whatever, is to make it sort of substantial increase. And in no way trying to reflect the fact that, in no way trying to reflect a small amount than what option four is. Yeah, I'm not trying to detract from the work he's done, but I think what you've done, what you've achieved in the papers we've seen, the buildings are fantastic. But I'll just be really happy to keep that 238, just to remind him that we are still in challenging times. And if that doesn't have to be forever, and it might be at the next year, we check another 100, but we've got to have a 100 to check, you know.
Further speakers, councillor McFerrin.
Um, I just wonder whether, given that the same, are you changing your motion or?
We, really, the general feeling around the table, I didn't realize just all the actual increase from, like, the 90,000 that we had in this year wasn't in next year. So clearly, there's no way as a council, we really would want to go backwards. So if you say the 90,000 actually is really only maintaining what we had this year, the actual increase, which I just picked up, was that it's only $28,000 above what we'd actually got in the fall this year. So I think, 18, sorry. So really, at the end of the day, I think it is better to go out on option four. And let's see how our community feel with it. And it's still a small amount of money, and I agree with councillor Vanvis and others that have spoken that, you know, the, the end result for the city, if we can encourage our heritage building owners to, to give them a reuse, to do this, is quite significant, right? It's like, I don't know, $6 million to be quoted for the, for the ADI building. Will the rate tag on that compare with perhaps 250,000 or whatever it might have been worth before they started? It helps fund us in the future.
But sorry, where I was going with that was just, with that in mind, I'm wondering, you wish it, whether you would tolerate me just asking Glenn a question about the rates relief? Then the option four proposes putting an additional 20K into the rates relief. And you feel that that would be a more appropriate place to put that 20K in, in either of the other, the other two funds?
It can, it could go either way. At the moment, we've got a position where we give rates relief, and it still comes as a grant. And the next report discusses that as well. And so at the end of the day, you're still giving people a grant. It's just with the rates relief, we've probably targeted a little bit less towards just the Heritage Fund upgrades to also just with the earthquake strengthening. So there's quite a few projects that we've looked at on George Street, where we've given them no Heritage Fund assistance, but we have given them rates relief because they've just been doing the tariff, for example. And we wanted to incentivize the tariff, because that's the thing that will probably kill people if there is an earthquake. But we can't give them a huge amount from the fund.
All right, thank you.
Um, other further speakers, councillor Thompson, do you want to?
Well, it's a clarification for my own purposes, really. I'm just, I'm not quite sure how we handle, how we handle actually the accounting of this because we talk about the, the rates relief, which is in effect a grant to offset the additional rate that would be paid. Correct?
Uh, no, that's the next page, yes, that's the next page. This is just straight rates relief.
So it is costly.
It is costly.
Are there further speakers, councillor Thompson?
What percentage of rate relief do we look at on these calls? A set percentage?
No, they currently, it currently differs, we, it's between 25 and 75%. We have it on a scale because, for example, someone might spend, buildings on George Street are worth quite a lot more. So we had a case last year where someone was putting $100,000 into a building there. We wanted to give them a smaller incentive towards that. But the building on Prince's Street, if we gave them both 50% rates relief, the rates on George Street were 16,000, the rates on Prince's Street were 10,000. You were, you were giving more money for the same amount if you just do it on a percentage of the rates. So we do, in that case, we scale a little bit. So on the George Street ones, we've tended to give 25 to 50%, but for some of the other parts of town where the buildings are worth this, but they're spending the same amount upgrading them to go up for a higher amount to 50 to 75. And it's only with the minimal rates, so they're still paying all the.
Another, another suggestion of this scenario is, I don't know, the government downtown, and the local council waived all the consents for the development, and then they made a contribution. Would that be another way of doing the rate? So they waived, they waived the building consent, they made a donation for the Heritage Fund. Let's get a rate.
Well, you, you're.
Just not, not.
More handy here, speak to that, Glenn, don't you know? Nicholas.
Most of us, I don't know if you have any observations on that, other than the fact that there'll be, there's a cost to the, to the, the local consent team if we waive the cost, because it's based on cost recovery climate?
Essentially, just to test, creating, we'd like to bring in a certain, much less. I think, I think it would be true to say that it's a valid, a legitimate way of doing it. But if, if you were going to keep the box straight, then you would pay the building consent team from this fund to make up what they had lost. So in effect, you're doing the same thing, by doing it this way, it's much more transparent.
Yeah, the, the reason I brought that out is that the developer's money upfront, rather than, what's the, council, what's called?
Some of these, some of these rights do as well. Are there further speakers?
Oh, just a question about the schedule of projects that have been assisted by Heritage Fund. I'm interested in the nature of the proposals. And they're obviously a mix of domestic and of commercial type operations, I mean residential and business and so on. Just interested in your observation as a person who's been most intimately involved with that in recent times, has there been a shift in the focus, the main source of, type of application, or the main type of application granted?
There has, we've shifted away from residential properties predominantly towards commercial properties. And we had some discussions early, and I think when councillor Vanvis, when you first started, we had some discussions around that we wanted to really focus on buildings that had a high public use or public enjoyment. And so we have tended to steer away from residential properties. And because the greatest need was around getting buildings earthquake strengthened, but residential buildings don't have to earthquake strengthen, so we're, for that reason, focused on non-residential buildings.
Now, councillor Sustain, if you could, so.
Just to make the comment, there was a question around the splits between these funds. I'm assuming, Glenn, that if one fund was being more effective or expected to put rate in one area than another, that you have the ability to, through the chief executive board, back through one of the standing committees to propose a shift of budget from one incentive to another in order to maximize the, the use of the budget. I believe that will be case study. So I think, I don't think anything more needs to be said. I think that there's a good support around the table for our heritage buildings. We, we have the opportunity to be the best heritage city. And, and that helps define us from other cities in New Zealand, which is one of the things under our economic development strategy we're trying to do. We're trying to, trying to get a clear vision of who we are and what makes us different. And, and we're lucky that we have these buildings, that we can retain them, then I think we will see an economic benefit flow from them.
Okay, I'm going to put up the motions on the wall. All those who favor it, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Careful. And we move on to the next report, which is Heritage Rates Relief Policy, which is 12.47 to 12.65. Now, I'll again, open up three questions around the table before I ask somebody to move either the recommendations or something else, are there any questions? Well, Amy.
No, we shouldn't understand quite often. So I don't feel like I need to point it out.
Um, so, there being no questions, would someone like to either move the recommendations on page 12.48? Or an alternative? Move to councillor Sustain, she's our secretary.
Well, I'm happy to see, and I'm hoping that the Chair of Finance will offer his, ask his thoughts. Maybe while he, um, well. The, the major, the theory fiction that I had was around the duration of the grant. It's up to four rating years, and I'm just wondering what the reason was for that duration, is it a question here?
Um, there wasn't a specific reason for that duration, other than we've always run rates relief over a three to four year term.
So further discussion, you would speak as a whole.
There's also the possibility, so we could grant for four years and then potentially increase it over the following four years to the full amount, because there's that, there is an opportunity in there to say, well, okay, at the end of that period, go straight to 100%, or at the end of that period, or even three years, we start stepping it up. So it's not a sudden jump depending on, on, I suppose, the value of the development that's been done.
Are there further speakers, councillor McFerrin?
So I was just going to say, one of the reasons, I think, of three or four years also is when a developer gets a building up and running, and most of these are commercial buildings, it's those first critical few years where they're getting tenants and where they're getting cash flows, that's when they really need the relief. And a small amount of relief in that period can give them the confidence they need to say, actually, I will do this, we will make this fly. Because they've got so many costs that come at the front end. If they've got that big rates jump straight away as well, then that just kills it.
Yeah, that's right, and I think that there's a reasonable flexibility in there. I assume that four may not be what is given to every developer. It will be, it will be scaled, we're going to make a choose of the development that they've impacted. So I'm reasonably comfortable with that.
And on a further point, are there all rates relief plans come to council? Councillor.
I'm a fan of the chief, chief based office rejuvenation. And I think it will actually trigger quite a bit of, you know, renewal at the end of the day. And look on, on heritage buildings, you have these, I just wondered why it's selected, obviously a big project, but. I just wondered why it's selected, obviously a big project, but is there any other reasons?
Um, we have, look, in previous years, council had, in previous iterations of that Development Council had, um, in some ways committed to rates relief for that project. And we're, we're really trying to work out a way to fund that, given that our current objectives are not stretched to that type of thing. We've got a couple of others that are currently off rates relief that could potentially be projects that would fund into this, but they're not at that stage yet to apply. So this was the first one that was off the book. But I think this is a, an unusual one, and I don't, I don't see many others of this magnitude.
Are there any further speakers? All right. Okay, I'm going to put these of their recommendations on page twelve point four eight. I'll put up all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Thank you. For you guys, or for you for the next, um, reporters, they've warned an evening update. And that is on six J one, six J. Then yours, the more of, again, the more. Welcome, Maria. And I'll throw this open, a question in first, Counselors, so in questions of, this is on six J three.
What's in the news, Mark?
In the news, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's an update. I'm, I'm getting a little confused on looking at the report from September last year. The update is on six J.
One.
Questions, not yes.
Well.
Okay, no questions?
Well, I can move in the report, you know, and I assume that the ECO, uh, report will cover, um, the recommendations, is to whether or not we can have a carry on remaining budget or abolish.
So move, Counselor McTavish, second, Counselor Hawkins, any further speakers? I'll put up all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Uh, carry. Thank you, Maria. Now, I, I'm going to move from the, that's the end of that section. So I'll move from the Chair, the three recommendations in this case related to City planning, second, Counselor Stans, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Sorry?
I just want to raise that initial leaving section seven. Section six, I mean.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, you're right, um, ages, as we, ages six point one, which is City Development, and there's also consent six point seven, eco housing consent six point seventeen, are there any? I'll, I'll add to it. Are there any points on those before we move on?
I have, yeah, six point two, oh, six, that's a little, I can see. Um, there's a line there about biodiversity support. And I'd just like to raise that, we seem to be on a day where we're sort of reviewing a whole lot of things. And, and, um, and I'd just like to put out that that line there, that reflects biodiversity. And it seems to me that, um, that, and you know, we're, we're losing Eddie Hogan shortly, which is a great loss to the, the, the working of that fund and building and, and the energy that people put into it. Uh, and so I'm, I'm, uh, I'm thinking that we, we've talked about, a lot about biodiversity, and now I'm going to say a word about the natural one. Because the contribution of it is just simply enormous for the city. And it's, it's, Counselor Stans was in a rhetorical question, you know, what is the point of difference? What are our endpoints of difference? And the nature of the nature of the activity up here. And we all know what they are, we're ahead of them, we're classified, and so on, like tracks and so on. This, this sum here, it, it has been adequate up till now, in fact, under subscribe in some, some years. Um, but I think, and I plan, as President, as Chair of Briefing, it requires a review of the way you have the criteria and the way you manage and promote it. Uh, and, um, I, and certainly how we're going to start resources, and of course, we've got a lot of, of the, you know. On the surface, it looks like it's a, it's a reduction, and, and, but I don't think it is. And I'm, I'm sure that it's, it's not a big problem, but, um, you know, when we've got in our goal, the value of protected natural is the main, one of our main goals, and we're putting seventy odd thousand or whatever it is into it, it, it just doesn't seem enough. I'm not asking for a major boost in it, uh, this year, but a hundred thousand seems to me to be just fiddling around with it because I know major projects that are unfolding before, uh, this coming year, uh, that will easily swallow up quite a lot of money to keep our, our, our natural, our asset, our natural capital going. And, um, I just think it, it, you know, we've, it's, it's been a value up till now. We've, we've quite a few projects that were wide and, 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 we've just been a lot, we've been a lot of work and see a lot of people commenting.
So move, you're well, put an option there, Counselor P. Are you, are you wanting to move, uh, an alteration to the budget, an increase in the budget for the sake of concentration purposes at all?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I would only be happy for that if I could see that there was staff resourcing and, and interest in promoting it.
So, so can we come back to you, can we, um, make a moment to review then, come back to you in the long term, please? In the LTP?
Yes.
So they expect, they've got a team here, by the way, as approach by the way, you see, it takes a long time, you know?
Um, yeah, I'll just say that we will be, um, the city's departure, reviewing, um, that, how we can support biodiversity in the team, um, because, you know, we need to have a, a good strategy going forward and I am, you know, I'm also aware of the, the gains that we've had since creating a heritage planner position in the team and, and perhaps something that, um, we need to look at in terms of biodiversity not being an add-on to someone's role. Um, I know, I can't sort of, Tavish has raised this issue before, so, um, yes, we will absolutely be, as a matter of course, going through a review of that, um, with the departure and, um, and looking at how we, um, make sure that that part of City Development's activity, um, gets boosted if at all possible. And, and whether or not there'd be any budget implications for that, I wouldn't know at this time, but, as suggested, we would come back if we felt that there was a need for that.
I just wanted to get any contact on the, what appears to be a 10K reduction, just so that we cover it all in the budget line.
Yeah, certainly, um, to the Chair, that, the 10K is the money that was allocated through last year's annual plan process for possum, uh, eradication on the Otago Peninsula. And it was, it, it, it wasn't an increase in the biodiversity fund, but it was put into the biodiversity fund account because that's where biodiversity money sits. So it, it, it's, um, a trip of the eye in terms of the figure.
Well, can I say that, living on the peninsula, that ten thousand dollars was, the effect of it was noticeable, has been noticeable in the increase in bird life uh, as a result of the efforts of the biodiversity group out there. Uh, and that is not just my observation, it's the observation of other people. It's a very remarkable transformation, despite the, by the decimation of the possums along. Right, now, the, there were two other areas, resource content in the eco housing scheme. Does anyone have any points to raise about that?
Yeah, and, and it's fairly simple, I'm a more perceptive, of perception, John. But, um, I'm looking at the performance in targets and noticing both in, in this part, this area of work and in others, uh, we seem to be setting, setting our targets, uh, lower than what they have been achieving. And I'm just wondering, uh, I'm looking at six fifteen, for example, uh, whether this is just a, is this a reflection of a conservative approach, you know? I mean, I know way back, we had the boil water days, went from eleven point natural to a number fewer than one hundred, which seemed to me like we were expecting a major disaster or something, contamination had been in our water supply. Uh, that's just, I don't know, I'm sure that it's not going to happen, but it seemed like a big number. But in, in other ways, elsewhere, we've got these targets which, uh, seem to under, uh, just to underestimate what we could achieve and that not coming...
Can I just...
So they, they're not setting ourselves up for fail, or what is this?
If I could comment, um, Counselor P, it would probably be fair to say that the, in general, across the council, the KPIs are a rather odd mix of the unattainable and the unavoidable and the unmissable. And, uh, I would suggest to say that some of them are outrightly bizarre. Um, we have kicked off in time for the LTP, a complete review of the entire process of setting the KPIs. Um, I think the story that's become a bit legendary, but it isn't that true, is that when I started here, my Economic Development Manager had a KPI that involved him increasing the population of Dunedin by two percent a year. He told me, no matter how busy he was in the work, that he simply couldn't pull it off. So, um, a lot of these measures are, they're, they're a mad mix of an old fashioned approach to measuring, to measuring deliverables. So at the moment, we're kind of limping through for one more year. The really good news, I think, on this front is that Adam Feely, the chief architect of the Queenstown Lakes, has a similar view of these to me. And so we've teamed up and, um, in fact, he did a presentation to the all of Otago, chief architect of this forum. And, um, he and I have really pushed, pushed ahead and all of the others have joined. And so all of us have come up with, as far as we can, a common set of KPIs right across the Otago region, so that we start, then we start to be able to compare ourselves to each other. And there'll be some differences, but wherever we can, um, leveraging off the work we've done. Now, he, he kicked us off about nine months ago, so he's nine, nine months along the track, and we're just going to pinch that work, claim it beautifully as our own, and build on that. And so we've put together a team of staff from each council and, um, and, you know, started to progress that work. The LTP will bring you that whole new set of, what I would hope to be much more, much fewer, better targeted, more meaningful, and for the general public, much more transparenty, indicators about how good we are at what we're doing, or how bad we are.
Thank you. Further comments or thoughts on those? Um, now, I actually allow the, um, by, to move those recommendations. So since no one's changed it subsequently, can we just take it that, uh, those recommendations cover the later discussion as well? So we move, move on to, uh, section seven. Um, community development support, um, so it's bad with, we will avoid it, mistake the mail out of state with, um, not the reports in seven, but have just been paid, so simply confirm, seven point one. I mean, a few just comments on that. Community development, seven point nine.
Sorry, just had a question.
Oh, sorry.
I, I just, the, um, the, in the CapEx, the payment, two and quarter of a million dollars there, I, I just wasn't sure what that was for, and I just wondered, like, where or why?
So which page should we move?
I'm on seven point four.
Now, someone on the team answered it, please, well...
Yes, the, um, the most program to pay into the cemetery for next year will be, um, covering the, um, Green, Green Park Cemetery, um, road, the yours. So this year, we've, um, completing, um, doing the golden cemetery, and next year, we're going to do, um, and it's the last of the, of the, of the weeks, so it's going to take a bit of time.
Further, points, questions? So that's section, there's a community developments, seven point nine. So grants, we're on to this, on pages six K one, six J eight. Now, um, stop, hold. We're on to page six, page one, Counselors, civic grants, um, some good, good, clear recommendations to discuss, but I'll open up the questions for, so if you have any questions on the report. What number was that? Sorry? Six K one, two, the smaller folder, I can, CapEx, please, of it.
You wish it, we will relieve and have the more recommendations, um, because I think they are a tier, a way to deal with the situation than we tried to do last year, where the moratorium obviously didn't work for various reasons. So, um, I'm supportive of the approach. Um, I do think that we need to be signalling, and we are signalling to, um, people that receive these grants, that we are reviewing them and that process is underway. Um, and, uh, renewing the grants for a one year period for the purposes of consultation, I think gives a clear indication to those, um, organisations that are going to be in that, um, in the draft that don't need to come and talk to us about the value of providing a city.
Okay, well, we've parked that, and we've come back to have got, on the evening opportunity, you can ask any questions about the report before we move on to discussion.
Um, when I was first on council in two thousand and four, the, uh, one of, one of the, um, things that you had to have in a grant application was you had to have a project that the grant monies would go towards. And in those days, you couldn't use the grant money to pay yourself as a facilitator or, or to pay a person that actually had to go into the project itself. Um, what I have perceived since then is, is a, a, an increase in the number of facilitators and, and sort of managers of these kind of projects that are getting paid, who in the past would have most likely been volunteers. And I've also perceived that there have been less projects actually happen as a result. Is there any possibility that we could steer things back to a situation where we gave grants for projects rather than just gave them to individuals to facilitate?
This report refers to what we commented on back in two thousand and four, the civic grants and our more significant grants and the smaller grants we offer through our community grants scheme. Um, and they mostly have been for this baseline support of organisations. But these actually haven't changed in, um, in their direction at all. You may be referring to our, um, community grants, which are much smaller amounts of money between, but less than five thousand dollars, and yes, they have, um, there's been a swing to sever it, I notice, I'd agree. And that's the grants that we will, will form part of the review. And we will go out to the community and say, what should we be doing, how should we do it? But we'll bring a paper to you before we go anywhere out to the community. That's why we're asking for this delay and do anything now so that we can consult with you before we consult with the community.
Okay, so, no, Counselor, so some room for Counselor McTavish, sending, so move, and that is the, um, recommendations on page six K one.
Sorry, I should also have seen in, just in my introduction, that I, I think if there is a motor on the table for, for us to test any of this, if anyone thinks we shouldn't be funding any of this, be not, be a process to, um, put that... funding any of this, be a process to put that motion forward now or make an amendment to my motion so that the organisation concerned has a heads up that they need to come forward and make their case rather than waiting and trying to remove it when we realise that we meet our submission.
Well, certainly, council has the opportunity to do that now in the discussion.
Correct.
That's exactly what we're looking at. So is there any, any discussion on this? Bear in mind that this is for consultation. There is none? Then I'm going to put it. All those in the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Again. Okay. Now we move on to the next report. It's on Little Region Theatre, and this is your agenda, pages six L one, six L seventeen. And welcome. Again, I'm going to open it up for questions for staff, councilors, if there's any questions on this report. And then we'll proceed if we want to, recommendations. So questions, councilor Thompson?
The Region Theatre has been a valuable asset for a long, long time. And obviously, they will well spend any money that they get, they raise a whole lot of the books, Alex. However, we're in a situation where I'm concerned that we might have some other higher priorities. For instance, we may even lose the Mayfair Theatre if we wanted some of perhaps even this level of funding. And given the situation, given an overview, is this funding that vital to the region? Might it not be a better step than Mayfair or Fortune or in a number of other more threatened facilities? I know it's an awkward question, but really, it's the one that, the one that stands out. What do you want? Do you want a slightly improved region or do you want to save the Mayfair?
I think that is a very difficult question.
It's very unfair and I acknowledge that, but let's face it, that is probably fairly dear where we sit in council. Perhaps.
Can I merely through the chair draw attention to the comment on six, six L one, is it? That says, outlines our expectation that, the expectation we identified for the region that it's, you know, the premier auditorium for, for the region and also that it provides a range of cultural activities. So we, so as a council, we've already identified those pressures or expectations of the region.
My point is that the region is fantastic already and serves rather well. And the increase you're talking about, might it not be more appropriate saving out of theatre and the real threat?
I just suggest that what we've got here is our fund, is what we see as a funding, funding requirement to enable the region to deliver on the expectations that we, the council's already identified for the region.
So you're not willing to look at the wider context, is what you're saying?
Can I just make the point here that we don't want to confuse funding that's aimed at improving the region with funding that's aimed at what it costs to operate. And I think that that might be a bit confusing what you're saying because, you know, this is not, for my reasons, designed to enhance it, it's designed to maintain.
Could I connect?
Yeah.
I, I, I probably disagree with you.
You pull up the funding requirement.
I don't disagree with what the council then is talking about, but this is purely, as you've just said, relating to the operation of the region. And as a result, and the extra money is really a result of the money that's being spent on the region, much the same for Town Hall in the last two or three years, of which we funded, I think, four million dollars and they found three million themselves, well above what we asked them to do. The costs associated that we're asking for here really only relate to mechanical works related to new lift and lift contracts, increased building warranty and increased insurance costs, which really are outside of their control. And I think we, you know, it's really just a matter of formalising where the money comes from. We, we have funded it today because we believe it's an important part of the city. It's really just formalising that process.
Thanks, Robb. I'd like to just kind of reiterate that because we are actually asking for advice from the community on how to clarify the diversity agreement and the allocation that we get from.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Councilor Thompson?
I'm assuming that staff have had access to the region's accounts and have been able to verify that that needs is a genuine need, that it's not arising, just to pick up on council events, or that it's not arising out of profits being used for redevelopment and therefore not being enough to run the operation.
I haven't seen their books in detail, but I have discussed the matter with Sarah, the general manager. And I'm re, you know, I can check on that if you'd like, but I'm really comfortable that Sarah's reasonably honest and straightforward.
Well, if she can count it though, I think that's the point.
Or she's managing. She does manage the property and I'm sure she's, you know. These costs, for example, the building insurance, you know, at the end of the day, whether she's running a business or not, that building cost insurance relates to, to sorts of things that happens.
My, my point has been misunderstood, but it's not, it's not a technical proposal that rocks and feels the proposal. It's, it's that we're being asked to allocate almost ten percent of what Heather and we've got, but we have no information in front of us that would give us any ability to determine for ourselves whether that's appropriate. And so I, I would want some reassurance that that's been locked out properly.
Can I, can I suggest that we come back, defer further consideration of this and come back with some further information? I've just been with the financial analysts.
So just to clarify, councilor Thompson, what your, the, the request for extra money is based on those three items on page six L three, building insurance, building warranty and mechanical maintenance. So you want reassurance that they are genuine costs?
No, no, I don't believe for a moment that they would be coming to us and saying that this made them up. My, my, my point, my concern is that in, in a profit and loss account, you are relying on the profit and the depreciation to be able to reinvest into your plant upgrade and all the rest of it. So you could, for example, be making a quite significant profit, but redirecting that money into, into capital enhancements and therefore be running short of money to pay the day to day running costs. I'm not suggesting that's the case at all, but I just think it's not really appropriate for us to make this decision without somebody ensuring us that they're locked in that side of it and they consider it just a wrong call.
Well, we have to remember that when we manage buildings and we have these service level agreements, we do meet things such as the insurance costs. And that's just an increase on the insurance cost. It's not being on insurance cost as such.
With respect, it's not your job to advocate on that. I've asked a simple question around the, just wanting, you, you yourself have said you haven't seen them. So it's a reasonable request that staff be able to report that they have assessed this and, and they're comfortable that this is appropriate.
If you're quite comfortable with that, you can advise your boss.
We've, we've brought back to you with what we.
And we can't get them in the next day or two, but we can do this as a submission to annual plan, like those other organisations do. So in fact, we've got right through the whole draft process to, to come forward with a submission about the need for this.
And just to be clear, I'm supportive of the proposal under those circumstances.
You know, I understand what you're saying, it's transparency. Councilor Thompson?
I just clarify, the region's insurance, are they insured through the city and the city we charges it? So in fact, it's the city that sets the sixty four thousand.
Yes, that's correct. Can you, we insure the region theatre under council of insurance for all of our properties.
And this is the recharge of that?
This is, this is essentially the premium that relates to the region theatre.
Okay. Building warranty fitness, do we do that?
Yes, we do, we manage it. We have a legal obligation as the owner of the building.
So it's our charge to the region?
Essentially, yes. Whether we pay it ourselves, whether we recover it from the region theatre, but it's, it's run by City Property as part of our warranty fitnesses on the grey buildings.
So we can be reasonably confident that the sixty four thousand or ten thousand are correct because it's us?
Yes, it is us.
But again, you missed my point. I'm not questioning the accuracy of those figures.
That's a total, we can understand that. Councilor Thompson?
Thank you, your worship. I endorse councillor Thompson's view, just like if you were going to go to any funding trust or anything like that, you always have to submit your annual return with the application of funding, so on very much in this case on that basis.
So, I mean, you might already answered this question. They say extra insurance or whatever.
That's the total insurance.
So they're asking for funding, who's paying it before?
Oh, we, we, we pay it and then they pay it proportionally, they pay a tax as well. This is just the.
If you're required for full insurance, you've bought it in a year or that's just this year.
Well, no, there's, there's a service level agreement usually where, where there's a, an arrangement to pay the insurance at that time and that insurance has increased significantly.
You should have paid the increase.
That's right.
Have you had the increase on section four there at all?
No, not.
But do you have any idea, Robert, on what the increase has been, A, as a result of the increased value of the property because it was done up? And B, because insurance premiums have gone up anyway?
I, I couldn't answer that now, but I can come back to you.
Definitely. That might eliminate councillor's question as well. Are there any further questions? Right. Now, just let's consider where we are with regard to this recommendation. We, we're right on the time when we were going to finish. We are expecting to get, to get a sort of fitness without which we can't certainly address recommendation two. And my suggestion is that recommendation three is going to be quite a discussion. So I'm going to suggest that we call today to a halt and that we give, give them time to get that, that information and that we reconvene in the morning and then we tackle the other issues because there's no way we're going to get through the issues around recommendation three, which isn't actually a recommendation, it's a lottery. So we, we, that will take some discussion in the short. So can I, I'll call this meeting to an end now and we'll reconvene at nine. We'll reconvene at nine. So thank you all for your, and that starts particularly for you. All right, good morning, councillors, and welcome to this second session. Just a reminder that we go into the non-public part of this meeting immediately after lunch today. So that's when we'll be doing it, that's for the benefit of the media, so that you know what we'll be doing. And we, we left off yesterday in the middle of consideration of issues around the region theatre and we were seeking some clarification regarding finances. I'm going to ask the chief executive, and this relates to recommendation two on page six L two in our small folder, and I'm going to ask the chief executive to just give us the background on the report.
So in discussions with the staff last night about this report, we knew we had to bring the report up around the third recommendation here, which is on the representation. And a decision was made that, look, why don't we canvass, we know there's financial issues, let's canvass those at the same time. In hindsight, we think it probably might have been edited or a different way. And we were looking at it last night and trying to tease this out. The discussion we got back to was, over time, we've tried to get you all to a position in every year's annual plan where all new requests for external funding are able to be brought together at the same time so that you can look at them and weigh them up against each other. And by putting this in here, we're a little bit worried that we've compromised what we've been all trying to do over time. And also, we can't quite get some clarity or we're still working to try and get clarity around some of these figures in the, in the short space of time between us and property and, and the region. So the recommendation is at this point that we just strike, if you're comfortable with this, strike through recommendation two or don't take it too much further. Our staff will work with the region manager to help her put in a submission on these issues to annual plan. And we'll redo this accompanying report, just the stuff around the finances to accompany that submission. And then you can consider their request for additional funding along with any others that you receive, if you're comfortable with that as a process.
I think that is the better way because were we to endeavour to come to a conclusion about it now, we would be doing so on the basis not only out of context and comparison with other submissions and requests, but we'd be doing with inadequate information. And I, I don't think that would be satisfactory at all. So I'll take the chief executive's suggestion on that. Nonetheless, we need to consider the third recommendation, which is regards the governance and representation. And, and I think we need some context around that. So I'm going to ask the chief executive to give a bit of context in terms of the representation we have on other boards because it's different for different ones. And I think we need that context. And councillor McTavish?
Sorry, I just want to, just a process issue. The service level agreement, which has been introduced here, I assume was introduced on the basis of discussions which included the finances that OTT might be expecting to receive from council. Is it therefore not, not actually within our, or would it be unfair of us to expect that their continued support would remain for the service level agreement in the absence of confirming any funding for it?
We can't confirm funding, of course, until May or June anyway. So in that sense, it's not until the final annual plan in, in, in the region staff are well aware of that. So we'll go back and have a discussion with them. I mean, I think what we're saying to them is we will support you to put this proposal forward in detail that is more, more simple and easy to follow, I suppose.
So there's no expectation that we would sign up on the service level agreement today?
No.
It's just saying that we'll develop one.
So the attached version is just the existing, would remain in place until such a time as we.
So it would also be good to revisit the first recommendation around us actually working together with City Property and the Togafree Trust to develop it?
Yeah, yeah. Great.
Right. On to the issue of representation and governance of the board. As I say, we have different arrangements with different organisations. And that isn't necessarily a bad thing, but in this instance, we have to decide what we do with the region. For instance, we have an arrangement with the Fortune Theatre whereby we own the building, as we do with the region, and we have a representative, representative on the board. It happens to be me at the moment. The, the, the one option is to do the same thing with the region. On the other hand, we have relationships with other organisations where we own the building. For instance, the Art Society, we own the railway station. We don't have representation on their board, even though we provide them with premises. So there's no hard and fast draw. So can I just ask the chief executive to give a bit of context? And then I'll throw it open for questions of Cara and Nicola and chief executive.
Yes, we had this discussion with the governance manager in the new training when we were looking at various agencies or groups around the city that have asked for council representation or they have in their own constitutions about having council representation. So there's some other examples too, the Mayfair Theatre, for example, we own, we don't have anybody on that board. We don't own, oh, we don't own it. We just, okay, sorry, I apologise, we just give them a grant. The ICE Stadium, which we do own, we have historically not had anybody on the board of the ICE Stadium, but in that, you know. But in that, you know, they've been having, they've been stretched financially and they asked for, and did conversations with us. We've, we've worked our way through to a new funding arrangement for them and, and to assisting them get their budgets into, into good shape. And they, they and us have agreed that we put a nominee from the council on there just for a one-year period. It's an accountant to help them through a sticky patch, if you like. So that's a model. I think one of the particular issues that's come up here is that this board meet fortnightly. And that puts a particularly onerous requirement, if you like, or a large requirement for any councillor that sees, I'd be interested in being on this board. But they've also said they would quite like the council person to consider being a non-voting member on the board, which is why you've got five, five, you've got the decision, if one of you wants to be on the board and then do you want to be voting or would you rather be non-voting? There's the decision you could ask for a nominee if anyone of you can think of somebody that would be willing to be on the board, meet fortnightly, and then whether they would be voting or non-voting. Or outside of that, you could do what we do with these other agencies where we don't have anyone on the board and we simply deal with it managerially through the service level agreement, expectations of, you know, what, what is, what is given in return for the grant that the council gives the organisation.
So I'll throw it open to for questions if anyone would like to clarify anything that's in staff.
It's a bit difficult, but the current position of the Theatre Trust is that they have pretty much concluded the restoration, if that's right. So it's now an operational theatre. The risk of it ceasing to exist has gone.
The risk of the building ceasing to exist has gone. I think the management and some of the board would argue that they have an aging volunteer base and that they are stretched to run the theatre within their current funding envelope, using largely volunteers as they do at the moment, which is why they are asking for it. And have consistently for some time been suggesting that if we want the Regent to continue to run as the remnant theatre location, if you like, then they will at some point be requiring extra funding in order to make that work.
So that actually does come around to suggest that a service level agreement is a better, we want theatre for the city. That is our major theatre, I guess. A service level agreement to allow us to have that theatre operated. Perhaps is the right way to go.
Councilor Z.
I'm not sure who it is. I'll see if I can answer this question. Is the council happy with the level of reporting that comes back from the Regent? And incidentally, the, or coincidentally, the Ice Stadium as well. So we operate in a sort of no surprises system where we are aware on a regular basis just what is happening there, so. I'm sorry.
And in terms of the Regent, the, the service level agreement and the reporting around the current one tells us exactly what's happening within the operation.
So you're very happy with that and no need for any change or no need for any sort of further observation policing or any, any other additional security that you think the council might need?
I mean, what we are trying to kind of work through in this process is making the actual service level agreement more transparent so that we can get a better understanding of what departments are contributing and council as a whole to the theatre.
Now, the man has mentioned that he was the city's representative on the board. Is it a requirement for him to report to staff on how he sees things at the Regent? Is that a, I mean, I think I know the answer, but because I've been on a number of boards.
I was on the.
Are you aware? Yeah.
But it's a question. It's a good one.
Yeah.
So there's no formal process there, but if, if there's anything that's of concern, then most definitely, I guess, the conversation would happen.
Councilor Hawke.
I don't know. Two things. I don't know whether anyone will be able to answer this first question. Without questioning the theatre's eminence, given its schedule over the years, is there any obvious reason why its board would be meeting as frequently as it currently does?
That's a very good question. In conversation with Sarah around that, they, because they've had such a large board, they really want to work with a much smaller, more hands-on board, meet more frequently, not have such big long meetings. That's my understanding. I still think it's, it's a really big ask for a board to meet every fortnight, but that's the, that's the way they want to try.
How long have they been, how long have they been operated like this?
This, this, this is a, a new process through the review they did last year of the, of their date.
The other thing is, I just wonder whether or not the question of the degree to which council supports the theatre financially may impact upon how we feel we need to be represented on that board. I mean, I think there's an expectation that if it was to be significantly greater in terms of financial assistance, they would want to be, you know, a council representation and how that money is spent, perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, that's the dilemma, I think. Because when we were preparing the report, we were thinking, well, actually, previously and into the future, council has quite significant investment in the theatre and operation of the theatre. But on the other hand, if the board are meeting two, you know, fortnightly, that's a really big commitment for the council of representation. So it is really about when you send your representation. That's the.
Councilor Thompson.
I am normally on the board. There were three meetings since my appointment before Christmas, each one of which clashed with a, either a council or a GHB. Really, because I've not attended, so I feel absolutely qualified to comment. Or uncompromised in any way. Look, I, I really questioned why we are on the boards of so many organisations and with so little logic around which we're on. I think that the methodology of service level agreements with organisations is a far preferable way to go. You sit around this table then and you make decisions around where you think council's priority is for funding. You can make some more objective decisions around ranking, funding requests. I think that what is however needed is that where council have a direct financial investment, so in the Reap would be a good example, their financial investment isn't in the Regent Theatre Trust, but it, its investment is in the building. And if something happens to the Regent Theatre Trust, then the council clearly has an interest. I, I think where that is the case, I would prefer to see a staff member with financial expertise who is charged each year with reviewing the annual accounts of those organisations and alerting council to situations where it feels, where that person feels that there is a genuine risk here. Now then, you can make a decision around whether you wish to put a representative on the board for a period of time, whether a staff member or, or a councillor. You can make a decision whether you want to have somebody else appointed to keep a careful eye on it in much the same way as the Ice Stadium situation. We've had the Bowles example in the past. So I would, I, I just don't see why we are on, I was, I did three years on the Toitoo Board. Was able to attend, I think, just about every meeting, a couple of the beginning. Thoroughly interesting, but there was absolutely no point to my being there. And it was in essence an internal staff meeting. And there was no point to us being there. Lee will probably, well, it was a word in his mouth, he may well have said that.
Yeah. Having done the Regent Theatre for years as well, the Regent Theatre in particular, I found that we were basically there as a subkind of figurehead sort of thing that gave somebody comfort about who that person was and that said it wasn't any of us.
Can I, just to finish off, I think the other thing, and the reason I asked yesterday about finances for Regent, and I wasn't picking on the Regent, but is you have different circumstances that will affect where your prioritisation might lie. So in something like the Regent Theatre, where they actually generate quite a large depreciation component, which is free cash, if they're in a expansionary mode where they're doing theatre upgrades and all the rest of it, then clearly they have a real hunger for free cash. And you would have perhaps a different view about how much additional support they needed to another time where they may have no major projects and it's, it's just routine maintenance. So you may in fact wish to fluctuate a service level agreement with an organisation like that. So I just think that if, if we identify those we've got a significant financial interest in, staff are charged with oversight and that needs to be a bit more than, as you said, rugby football union did with the IRFU. But, but, you know, it needs to be responsible. And then issues of concern come back here. That's how I look at it.
Councilor New.
Thank you, Worship. I think I'm on a similar page to Councilor Thompson. But my, my question is with regards to the situation we've got in front of us today with the Regent. Is there any particular emphasis on the skill set that the, the Regent require? Because clearly they've indicated that they want to be more hands-on and that's, and that's great. But I think that's really the key for us to be able to fill that gap. And once we determine that skill set, just like the, the Ice Stadium scenario, if it's a council or so be it. But if it's a person that's outside council or it's a staff member, if they've got the best skill set to get them to the outcome, I'd be supportive of that. So is there a skill set that they require that you're aware of?
No, I mean, they've, they've expressed a preference for, if we want to have a councillor on the board, that it's a councillor non-voting.
Councilor, Councilor P.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I had highlighted the city for Kristen Bates. I'm not even seeing more convinced now. Here the commitment, the councillor would be, may to, to be on board. But I, but I also had thought that, that we should check out what expertise was needed there. Particularly, we shouldn't even get capital financial one anyway, but I think Councilor New has said what I wanted to say anyway about making somebody a vote, but a voting appointee is what I suggested.
Okay. Councilor McTavish.
Yeah, the, the only, I, I, I hear where everyone's coming from and I can understand those perspectives. What I would highlight though is that if, if the relevant, or we've got a lot of different boards in the city and they all serve our community in different ways. And from time to time, events come to pass that illustrate that perhaps there hasn't been the right skill mix on that board. And often then we are required to step in and to. Yeah, take, take, take measures that, that suck up a lot of our time and resources or staff time and resources and could probably have been avoided should there have been a, a skill mix on, on boards that, on those boards, the appropriate skill mix. And so I guess what concerns me, and I don't know if having a councillor on the board is the right response to that, or even having a councillor appointee on the board who has no voting rights. So I don't, I don't, I'm not confident that that's the way either. But I think that perhaps we need to have a good think and maybe it's as part of the civic grant review about how we, how we use our processes to better illustrate or better identify boards that may be in a situation where they need additional support or maybe going through a time or a project where they need additional expertise. And yeah, maybe that's the way to do it, rather than to, to, to split our resources to find them amongst multiple boards.
Councilor Staines.
I, I tend to agree with Richard and Bridgetti. I think a service level agreement constructed correctly that gives a, our start, particularly in the case of this where there's money transferring, financial audit capability. So, so we're aware of what's happening. And then within that service level agreement, a clause which gives us the right to have an appointment on the board. So it's our right to choose. It's not that their constitution requires them to have one of us. So then you're in the position where if, if they, if we have a concern that is flagged by staff or monitor the service level agreement, we could choose to appoint someone. And if that's a financial issue or it's a marketing issue, that is raising, raising it. And it should be a voting position. Then we can appoint the appropriate skill set. So whether that's one of us around this table who has that skill set or whether it's someone else in the community that we believe has the right skill set so that we actually have someone there who is having a direct input, can vote and is charged with reporting back to us because that then gives us, we're doing what we should be doing, which is the governance role for the expenditure rate of our funding. In fact, I think it should be in all of our service level agreements.
Just listening to the conversation around the table, I, I think it's, I'm just clarifying what it is that we're funding and what it is we are seeking representation of. And I think it's important to separate the role we have as a building owner from the role we're funding in a sense of the trust. In a sense, we've dealt, we take the building to one side, we have to deal with that and we, we fund it one way or another. But in a sense, we are delegated to the trust the responsibility of running theatre for the city. And that's, they've done a fantastic job over the years and they've done a fantastic job of fundraising. And as they've identified, their membership is aging. And therefore, one of the solutions to that is for more rate payer funding to go in. In that event, and that's, we can decide how much or if that's appropriate or not. But if that's the result, if we end up with more rate payer funding going in, then clearly council has to have some say on the board. So, and it should be, as Councilor Staines said, rather than the, the trust coming to us, someone inviting us, we, we say, well, as a condition of our funding, we, we need some governance oversight and an appointment. And it may not be a councillor and it may not be someone who has to go to every meeting for that matter, but it needs to be someone who has some, I would have thought, some voting right. Councilor Z.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with those comments, but, and it might just need a separate resolution to, to implement that. That is a, someone to oversee should we need it. But in the first recommendation that's on that six one, you know, report, I think that covers the whole issue quite, quite neatly. And it's reporting back to the events and community development. So to me, that's, that is the, that is really, could be seen as, as, well, that's where the council has input. And so I think that we have got a service level agreement, which I think is working well, and a reporting back to the events and community development. And then the other issue that Richard raised is with property. And they, they are looking and, and do look at the, at the building because it is, it is owned by the city. So I think those three issues are covered in that recommendation. This comes from a want to specific, have a specific resolution for someone to be able to sit on the board from time to time. Though in my view, the, the recommendation, capital.
If I read what I wrote to replace current resolution three, so I've resolutionally amended to read that the council exercises its oversight role of the Otago Theatre Trust by staff managing the service level agreement as a day-to-day operational function, comma. But that the SLA ensure the Regent Trust constitution allows for a voting councillor appointee to the board at council's discretion.
Okay. Would someone like to move that? Councilor Vandervis, second to Councilor Staines? This is, you're happy to move recommendation one and recommendation three? So that's one and this is the new three. So we'll just get, get Pam time to type that up. And in the meantime, I'll open it for discussion. So we'll just get Pam time to type that up and in the meantime, I'll open it for discussion. Yeah, so basically, the, the resolution is as on the order paper on recommendation one and recommendation three has been changed to option E plus the right of council to appoint a voting member on the board as well. councillor Thompson.
I totally support that, but, and I, I don't want to say this is an amendment because I think it's becoming too operational. I just really want to signal it. That I think it's really important that that service level agreement where we have a financial interest in the organisation, that the service level agreement needs to specify a couple of things. It needs to specify a no surprises policy and really flag that, that where the organisation is aware of concerns, that they will bring those to the attention of the council at the earliest possible opportunity. It needs to also identify a staff member role, not necessarily a person because they may change, but a role who has the responsibility of reviewing their financial statements. And council needs to have the confidence that that is being done in a measured and organised way. Because otherwise, the tendency is for these things to just be received and sit on a shelf. And I think there's been plenty of examples of that kind of thing happen over the years. And not necessarily in this organisation, but generally. So I, as I said, I don't want to tell management how to run the operation. But it is important that those things be noted and.
Well, I note that Nicola was taking notes as you, this might have been sorry.
We'll make sure that's included.
councillor McTague.
Yeah, I've been, I've really enjoyed the conversation. I think we've got to a good place. But even as I reflect on what we have got up there and I reflect on what the trust is telling us, they're clearly signalling to us that they have an issue with volunteer turnover. They've clearly signalled that in the event that they don't sort that problem out, they're going to have to come back to us for more funding. And it seems to me that if we were following our own, what we're saying around the table, which is we would like to know when an organisation is signalling that they would like some assistance, we would like to be able to appoint someone to assist them in those times. Then this is perhaps a time when this organisation is seeking some assistance that we may be able to provide. So yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that because I think that they have been quite clear with us about what their challenges are.
The only thing I might say that is, I would suggest that their suggestion be that a councillor be a non-voting member on the board would suggest that the kind of assistance they're looking for from us is not about having a voting member on the board. But they definitely, there is some way that we need to be working with them as they head into a different looking future for themselves.
councillor Bezir.
Are there other organisations that we should be looking at like the ICEA was putting down and bringing more than that same at this time? Do you want to say anything else? I stayed in mine.
I think the work that's happening in terms of the review of several components and I will be looking at all of them in that.
councillor Staines.
Clearly by seconding this, I agree with this resolution. But just in terms of the transition that the Otago Theatre Trust is going through, it's had a very passionate membership whose whole focus was to save the theatre and to get it back to a high standard. And so in a way, what is happening now is that they're pretty much there. And many of those people are on it. And perhaps there needs to be some thinking by the theatre trust in how they might create an interest for younger people to join the trust. And I think that's primarily in the role of helping them operate the theatre. They do use volunteers, many of them now quite elderly, to show people to their seats and do those things around the theatre. So that will be, if they have to cease, or those people, as those people reach a point that they can no longer do that or no longer wish to do that, they are going to see an increased operational cost from that. So I think in some ways it's an issue for the theatre trust that they need to think about how do they make their organisation more attractive to younger people? So they will come in and join. And maybe they will come in and join with a new vision and a new focus that takes over from those whose vision and focus was to actually save and restore the theatre.
councillor Vandervis, do you wish to speak to this or exercise your role in this? All right, everyone's spoken. I shall put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you Nicola. Now, under the section seven, the last two areas, remaining two areas are property, housing. That's seven point one five in the big folder. Any questions or comments to councillor Thompson?
Yes, on page seven seventeen. There is, I'm just wondering what the rationale is for expanding capital on new housing units. I'm not saying it's a good or a bad thing, but this, we are, is that, but I'm questioning, is that the best option for the next few years? What's the demand like? And could that capital spend get redirected into debt reduction or lower rates or something else? I just, I don't have a, I'm sure there's a justification that's been provided perhaps in earlier days, but.
Can I, can I just preface your, my understanding is that the social housing policy that was developed or strategy that was developed some time years ago, I mean, three years ago, two years ago, came to the conclusion that the surplus that was produced within the rents that would have been applied to building units was to be applied to upgrading the current units to the best standard we could. And when that was complete, then we would return to building new units. I think that was the aim. And it's important to, I believe, remember that that money is not rated money. It is surplus from the rents. It's generated by the units themselves. But Paul, can you?
Well, sorry, but just so Paul can answer completely. That's only correct to the extent that the net increase or decrease in cash each year on average is zero. But it's not. It's in the order of a couple of million dollars negative. So that's really why I'm.
Right, carried.
Yeah, I can assist without your worship. There have been some, some recent sales. Actually, I think a couple of them were probably two, maybe three years ago. And so the intention was that that money be invested until they start to reinvest in new housing units. So we're now starting to show that in our cash flow when they'll do that reinvesting.
So that's like, that's up to the year or three.
Yes, yes. So the only change between last year's annual opinion and this is that we've reflected the capital expenditure being higher in the years that we will spend the money from those property sales.
Okay. But there is the demand there?
We carried out a social housing needs assessment, I think, a year or so after we completed the social housing strategy. And that shows that there will be considerable demand. The estimate is that by the year, I saw sometimes I've read it, but we're going to be 10,000 units, I mean, sorry, 1,000 units short in one and two bedroom units. And over the next 15 or so years. So we're doing five years, not going to stack up. We're not going to cut them.
councillor Wilson.
Well, just in light of both the population, the consideration of where our population's going in the city, but also with housing using, I presume that those figures are continuously revisited and reconsidered? Or there is a review process before we commit to this sort of development?
We haven't done a review of those figures of recent because those figures were done on the 2006.
Population census.
And the new census data isn't through yet. So we would just be reviewing similarly.
Any further questions on that? Then on to civic leadership, seven point two one. Thank you Paul. Right, so if there's nothing from those, that's the, that's the remaining ones on section seven. So I'll move from the chair, the recommendation in this case relating, the recommendations in this case relating to community development and support, as on your decision sheet. Second to councillor Staines, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. On to section eight. The first line we need to just consider is Dunedin Public Libraries. This is page eight point one in the big folder. Hawk and Bernie. So Mr Hawk's here. If anyone has any questions relating to that? councillor Hawkins.
Just a question regarding the UNESCO City of Literature project. Are you anticipating any ongoing costs associated with that bid? I know there was money in the 13, 14 budget for it, but is that something that potentially would have ongoing costs associated with it?
Through the chair, there's no funding in the current year in 13, 14 for that bid. Essentially, the work that's being done towards that bid has been covered from within existing resources. And that hasn't been particularly great, although it must be staff time and a little bit of out of staff time. In 14, 15, in the budget before you, there is no funding requested for that proposal. Essentially, that relates to the timeframe for the bid. The bid that they're working on at the moment is due to be submitted by the 20th of March this year. And we won't hear until the end of November whether or not that bid has been successful. And there's no intention to input any money in the 14, 15 bid. For 15, 16 onwards, I guess that will be a consideration for council whether any funding would be required to contribute to, if we were to be successful in that to set up a small executive or small trust to administer and promote literary activities. The earlier discussions around that related to the various partners and the council is certainly only one of a number of partners, the university being another, the Atoname Trust being another, and various groups around the city that they would contribute. But it's considered to be relatively low level of expenditure that might be required, but we haven't really got that far. So definitely nothing in this year, nothing in 14, 15. But it would be something for council to consider in subsequent years.
Oh, sorry. Just one more thing. And again, this is perhaps context as much as anything else. The considerable drop in collection services in the library, which was 173,000 13, 14 and this budgeted as 58,000 ongoing. Is that a correction or a trend?
No, the, I can, through the chair, I can provide the background to that. And it relates to a proposal that hasn't yet come before the council executive leadership team to change the, I suppose, the location of the hosting of the library computer system. Essentially, as council would be aware, the, we collaborate with the other councils in Otago Southland under the Southland Consortium. The library's computer system is actually currently hosted in Invercatal and supported by that collaboration. And the, and essentially, under that arrangement, Dunedin is the bill payer. Under the MOU, Dunedin paid the accounts that support the operation of that consortium. And then we recover those monies from the other councils. Now, the reason for the drop in that revenue is that under the proposed arrangement that we're exploring, which is to join the national consortium, that there would be no recoveries because we wouldn't be paying any bills on behalf of any other councils. We would be subscribing to a national collaborative service that currently has close to 20 libraries participating and the Southland arrangement has five libraries, Dunedin being one of them. And there are lots of sort of sound risk, risk management and technical reasons why it's a better direction to head to. But the negotiations around that are yet to be completed. But because of the timing of the budget process, we needed to make some assumptions in terms of the strategic direction of that. And they've been incorporated in terms of reduced revenue.
councillor Thompson.
Bernie, I, we've got the report on the South Dunedin options, which is separate. And I know we'll discuss that separate, but I just want to ask you one question about that in relationship to the financial statements. Assuming we proceed with that, there will be, I have imagined, additional operational costs for that. But these aren't, we show the capital cost in the financial statements, but we don't show any change that I can see anyway to operational costs. And I wonder if I'm misinterpreting that or if I'm not. Where, if we understand what the order of those might be and how they might affect these projections. But things like staff costs don't change. Operational costs, there's a very small change in 1920. But there's no change to staff costs. There's no change to internal costs. And I would be surprised if those things weren't going to be an outcome.
Through the chair, we probably would have to look at that a little bit closer to the time and just see what was required. Certainly, it would depend on the nature of the facility and the contribution by any partners to that. So it's, it would require a little bit of crystal ball gazing. But councillor Thompson has highlighted a very pertinent issue. But I think it's because it's a number of years out and is dependent on the model that may be ultimately adopted, if at all, then it's something that possibly we could look at closer to the time. The intention with the South Dunedin Community Complex is that it would be a very efficient operation in that because we are currently implementing RFID in all our other facilities, that if and when the South Dunedin complex was opened, it would be an RFID facility. And that certainly, it makes very efficient use of staff time.
One thing councillor Thompson, when, when the South Dunedin Library Complex was originally budgeted for, it was a deliberate not putting increased staffing costs in because at the time it was to coincide with RFID. We assumed that the staffing decrease we'd have across the rest of the libraries, that that would provide us with enough staff to start the South Dunedin Library. Instead, what's happened is we've done RFID early as an invest to save option. What you'll notice in Bernie's budget is from this year to next, there's a $130,000, $140,000 drop in the staffing budget. In addition to that, he's absorbed inflation, which is perhaps a similar amount again. So in real money, it's about a $250,000 drop. That savings we've taken now, it's been used to pay for the RFID project. So given that and given that we've got considerable doubt about the scope of the South Dunedin Library, whether it will be a small shop front library, whether it will be, it didn't seem wise to pluck a figure from the year and put in operational costs. But when we do the detail, we won't do that.
I do understand that. I just feel it needs to be highlighted because it's not there. And I'm happy to return to it in discussion around the substantive report.
Any further on that? Back line. Okay, well, the next issue mentioned is the proposed South Dunedin Community Complex options and issues paper. That's 12.67 to 12.74 in your big folder. So I'll invite councillors to raise your questions. councillor McTague.
Just to follow on from councillor Thompson's questions, what I have laid up to ask is, there is talk of the implications for the book bus service in South Dunedin. I was wondering, how, to what degree those, any changes around book bus and particularly in relation to South Dunedin? in relation to South Dunedin, might effectively offset any need for increased operational expenditure around a South Dunedin static facility? Now, I appreciate there's not a whole lot of time associated, staff time associated with that, but equally, if it's an RFID library, perhaps the staff requirements would, would not be so high either, so, yeah, I was just, I would be interested in some comment around that.
Through the chair, the councillor McTavish has raised a, a very good point, and, and has highlighted the, in a sense, the dependency between the decisions relating to a South Dunedin Community Complex and the book bus service. There are four book bus stops in the immediate South Dunedin-St.Pilger area, and there's a, a larger number in the wider vicinity, ranging from St Clair to Forbury, Capuchin, et cetera, and even, and even a little bit further afield on the, sort of inner commissary area. So were council to decide to proceed with a South Dunedin Community Complex, in my mind, that would effectively be a trigger, and, and provide a timeline under which the planning, not only for that facility would occur, but could, would also involve thinking through what were the implications for the book bus service of the development of that facility on the agreed timeframe. There are a number of different models that are operating in New Zealand and elsewhere in the world for delivery of mobile library services. Dunedin's particular geography and the, and the usage of the, the current book bus service suggests that it's a very, very popular service, particularly for the smaller and, and communities more remote from the urban part of the city. So I, I wouldn't necessarily be recommending that, that overall service be, be removed, but certainly some of the inner, the urban stops could be reviewed in the light of the development of the facility, if that is councillors' wish. The, the current vehicles are, are over twenty years old, and way beyond the normal replacement time, but mechanically, I believe that they're still sound, although we have an annual mechanical check just to ensure that's the case, and, but we're in the position now of, of the vehicle certainly being well beyond their normal replacement time, and it may be appropriate to replace one or both, or one and replace it with another sort of vehicle. Southland District has just recently, or is in the process of replacing its large bus style book bus with a much smaller sort of Mercedes High Top type of vehicle, which are also used by Christchurch City Council. So there's a number of different options out there for service delivery, mobile service, library service delivery.
So in terms of the operational expenditure though, it's unlikely, from what I draw from what you're saying, that there will be a significant offset in terms of a reduction in book bus service that would be able to be applied to operational expenditure in a South Dunedin facility?
Through the chair, I, I really, I wouldn't like to suggest either way, really. I, I wouldn't be suggesting a, a massive increase in, in cost, but there may be opportunities to reduce cost as part of a review and redesign of that service, and in consultation with council obviously, and with the community. So, but my main point being that, you know, the, the decision to proceed, if council were to make a decision to proceed with a South Dunedin Community Complex, that would be a trigger to initiate a review of the book bus service, and what, what would be appropriate, and how we proceeded with it.
And my second question, Uriship, is just around the timeframes for option four. If we were to decide that option four was something that we wanted to investigate, how quickly would a pop-up library or she community facility be able to be established? Would that be something that could be operational in fourteen fifteen, or would it take longer than that to, to move?
Through the chair, it's, that's, that's a tricky one, that one, because again, it depends on how, how large a facility, where we could locate, what, what sort of, I suppose, building strengthening or modifications might be required. I, I would hope that we, if council, if council wish was to create a pop-up library in the first instance, that we could try and do something within ordinary thing.
Thank you.
Councillor Hawke.
The eight million budgeted twenty seventeen through nineteen for the capital build of this project, is that under the assumption that it's a new build, fully funded by council? And so, so that would be the upper limit, and perhaps cost less should it be, under a partnership model, or the idea around building reuse, particularly heritage reuse, which I think has a lot of merit, both financially and from a urban renewal perspective, it's not, we're not wanting for space necessarily in, in the South Dunedin area, and I think that's an option that has a lot of potential, but is that an upper limit based on those assumptions?
Through the chair, yes, the, the eight million dollars was for essentially building a new building, but it was, it, the figures are quite old now, because the report has, I suppose, the concept has been under consideration for some time. Were we to, we would need to decide on which option we wanted to proceed with, and then essentially, we would try and construct something with it, if that was the preferred direction within that envelope, but if we were reusing an existing building, all the projects, the, the cost to be, to be lesser.
Councillor P.
Thank you, yes. Just in developing these proposals and options, has, has there been any investigation of central government, or just that as government department units that are appropriate ones that might fit into this complex, and therefore give us a, some partnership with funding?
Through the chair, I, I have had a number of discussions with the Member of Parliament representing South Dunedin, and, and certainly I have raised that issue of, you know, are there any government departments that may be in a position to, to either participate or contribute to that sort of development? I've asked the question, I have no extra information at this stage.
Councillor Buzik.
Option one, in my view, is, is, that is the option that council came to after the last end of May, and I think probably the end of May before, before that. So to what degree has that option been progress? I mean, I've been under, under the impression that, that has been work being done, and I know property department have been looking at specific buildings, maybe standalone in a car park out there was an option, and the reuse of some heritage buildings or older buildings. Has that, has that been stopped, is there, is there no progress at all on that?
Through the chair, there, there has been, there has been, in a sense, since council's request at the, this time last year for us to explore options, certainly the city property manager and myself have had a number of discussions and explored a, a range of options. I, I thought has occurred to me that I should refer to councillor Hawke's suggestion, the eight million dollars is for, only for the building, it doesn't include the purchase of any, any land. So the, obviously, a facility that was constructed on land that council already owned would be advantageous in that there's no land cost, which that may apply for other, other sites. We have looked at a, a site in South Dunedin that is already owned by council, and is already a car park, that would be of sufficient size to accommodate a, the type of building that was initially proposed. We have, city property has negotiated a first refusal on another block, another property, were council to decide that it wished to proceed on that site. City property manager and myself have looked at the old Orfordon and Russell building, and had discussions with the owner of that facility, who would be keen to have discussions with us around possible future directions, and there are other buildings as well. So yes, there are, certainly, something has been happening, and there are a number of possibilities in the area.
It's just, and I know, I know it's question time, Uriship, but I find this whole process quite frustrating, and the council has made the decision with regards to what we are going to do with the South Dunedin proposal idea, and now, you know, today we've got another set of options, and this has been going on for, for Benson Park, remember, and even then, because it comes to Benson Park, that was on, we were talking about it. So, and quite frankly, I, I mean, I, it is just so frustrating, I almost get angry about the whole thing, because we have the likes of Antwerp and others that have been coming in here for years, and we just go on and on and on, and I'm sorry, Burney, it's not your fault, and it's not Robert Clark's fault either, because he's been brought in in the last, you know, the last minute, so to speak. But now we've got another set of options, why don't we just get on and do it? We've agreed to do it so many times, why don't we do it? Can anybody else?
Are we question time for opening page?
Well, we're in frustration time.
Well, I can, I think the, that there's some motion, resolution being prepared, that will, I think, address your issues. It is question time, so I, I will speak to, I will speak to the, to the motion in due course, but I, I think, well, perhaps I just, in light of your expression of frustration, I'll give a bit of context. We've had a, a budget for library in the, on the books for some time, it keeps getting put out, and at the moment it's due for seventeen eighteen, so it's still a long way away, still doesn't satisfy the requests of people like Antwerp, who came last time and said, just give us a space and we'll fill it. So I think that these options, to answer your question, actually address that request, because there's been a, a growing consciousness that what's needed there is not just a library, it needs to be a multipurpose facility to cater for various needs, and I think that the, these options are addressing both the frustration in the community that you share, but also the need to see it as more than just a library. So that's it. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you for the report, Burney. It's great to see the options being put out, I suppose, what I don't understand, and this is a question for further, I presume it would happen after this, but the digital office and what they're considering there, I don't think is covered, and I think there's possibly a crossover, and, and from Rebecca Williams, I would have expected in this report, and I haven't asked for that, so that's my fault, I'm not giving back to you earlier, but just understanding what they're saying, the demands for the space being as well, because I, I think there's so many crossovers here, and I, I love the fact that this isn't just about a library, it's about a community complex, but that, that community, and I'm probably wanting to understand how, and maybe it's a question for councillor McTavish, in community development, how that is being seen to be developed, and the needs we are to incorporate into this.
Councillor Thompson.
This hasn't been discussed at the chairs, but I think that the suggestion that you make is entirely appropriate, and I would like to see the city development team be involved in the discussions as well, because there's obvious alignment with the street scapegoat.
Make a line.
Just a bit of background, that in that, we have got a South Dunedin total place-based approach group, which involves people from, members from libraries, community development, city development, so we are looking at projects in the realm, and I think the fact that we've come back with possible joint developments with community partners reflects the fact that we have seen a discussion of community stakeholder, and we are looking to, to respond to that, to the feedback from the community.
Councillor Thompson.
I'm still not sure whether we're debating it or questioning, but I want to, I'll ask some more questions, so I can say something later in the debate. The, the concept of a community complex, I don't wish to, there's an element of builders and they will come about that, I'm slightly nervous about that prospect, and so when we talk about, it seems that we started off looking at a library, there was resistance to spend, given, you know, the circumstances we're aware of, so we start, so it gets spun into a community complex, which is just a bit more acceptable, but we don't have any operational costs associated with that, we don't actually have any understanding of what would go in a community complex, we don't have any understanding of what, if it was some of our services, that would mean in terms of duplication of cost, so my, my, my question is, do staff have an understanding, or do staff have a concept of what a community complex actually means, that they are asking staff to be, that they're asking councillors to be supportive of?
Through the chair, the, I, I think councillor Thompson's correct, it did start out as a library, but the context for that is that it wasn't ever going to be just a building with, with shelves of books and a few computers, the, the library was always, and perhaps library is in some sense a misnomer nowadays, that libraries are community spaces, and it was always going to be a facility that had community meeting rooms, public toilets, computer training, et cetera, et cetera, and the models that I just alluded to in the beginning of this report, the South Christchurch Library in Tetaqere in, in Levin, particularly the second one, have, have expanded that, that concept, where the library is at the core, but a whole range of other community facilities at the one roof, and devoted to the community. So I, I think that what, from a staff point of view, what we, what I would find really valuable is a direction from councillors, say yes or no, we want you to proceed with just developing that concept further, we want you to come back with some estimated costs around the library component, and what are the likely possible community partners, and, and proceed in that direction, if, if that is council's wish, because we're very happy to firm up sort of more details around that, will require some work, and also some direction from council around the, I suppose, the type of facility, either reused or new, and the type of arrangements that council will look favorably upon, as in council provides total funding or joint, joint venture type arrangements. To, to have that feedback to staff, we can certainly, and will happily get on and, and provide something to council to firm that up.
Councillor Staines.
I haven't got a question, but I've prepared a couple of resolutions which might actually help address some of the questions, so, okay, well, if you wish, if you'd like.
Well, I note that another couple of people wish to, councillor Hawke, do you have a question, or do, well, we've got the questions out of the way, and I don't need to answer them, I can put it in there. Okay, councillor Hawke.
Yeah, it's been noted that the potential capital cost and the potential demand of, for this facility, that information is perhaps a little out of date as of right now. I live in a hope that as a city will one day have an efficient and affordable public transit system, and council are doing work obviously around cycle access in the South Dunedin area, both of which potentially could impact upon the demand for a static facility in the South Dunedin area, and I wonder what, if any, work has been going on in relation to transportation planning around, I mean, how that would impact, I mean, if it was, basically, I guess my point is, if it's easier to get to the facilities that we exist, have already, would there be so much of a need for a facility in South Dunedin?
So you're saying, would we need the facility at all if, if public transport was improved into the central city, is that the question?
Not at all, but just, I mean, I think it would have an impact on the demand for a static facility if access was improved to the facilities we already have, and, and whether those sorts of considerations are being made as this work has been progressed?
Just to reiterate what I said before, that transportation planning are part of the integrated group that's looking at South Dunedin as, as a holistic way, but also to generate what Burney's already said too, that it's not just about, the objective isn't just to provide another library facility, it's also, you know, one of the wider needs of, of the South Dunedin community, that's, so it's more than, you know, it's a community complex rather than just a library, so I'm not sure that providing public transport is addressing all of the needs that this facility would, would provide.
No, nor, nor am I suggesting that it would, just that it would have an impact on it, and that would obviously have an impact on how big it would need to be, and how much it would cost, and all of those sorts of things.
So the transport, the transport planning implications are being feed into the next rule, through the South Planning Group?
Okay. Councillor Staines has prepared a couple of resolutions, so you're moving, and I'm, I'm happy to second that. Sorry?
Perhaps if I could, I could just introduce them, so that maybe start with the second part of the resolution. There are a number of empty premises, heritage buildings in South Dunedin currently, and I suspect that for very little cost, we could enter into an agreement to lease one of those, short-term lease, to enable us to have a pop-up library, and in fact, perhaps even extend it a little beyond that, to test this. to test this concept of community centre, such that maybe the digital office might wish to be part of that and start some digital training along with the computers. That their target polytechnic might be interested in joining in and putting in a pop-up community training facility, do some, something, so that while these are not permanent, they pop up for a month or two, or maybe for six months, we gain a better understanding of what the community actually is using and wanting to see there. And that then would lead to inform the first resolution, which is that we prepare, we look at preparing, or start preparing for, based around a heritage building, heritage reuse, to have a permanent facility rather than a pop-up, that is targeted around what we've seen the use of a pop-up actually showing us. So then it asks us that question, are we building something that's not going to be used? We'll get a better idea of its use, get a better idea of which organisations who provide community services might wish to be part of that complex, and therefore we can make a much better informed decision and put that into our LTP.
Can I just clarify, the phrase "pop-up", meaning sort of shop front, as opposed to the container, pop-up, container more kind of idea that we're seeing in other parts of the country?
Plenty of building to do there.
Discussion councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, I guess this is a clarification of the motion, so you're suggesting through the second motion that the investigative work is, takes place in the year fourteen fifteen in the form of a temporary, informed by a temporary space?
For the pop-up, so we can consider it as we're doing the final debates around long-term planning and assigning the final funding. And the second one is preparing it for a longer term, or making a decision on a longer term facility.
The first one?
Yeah, the first one does the longer term, the second one gives us the test, and that's part of this year's annual plan as we do the deliberations.
councillor Benson-Puck?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I unsurprisingly share councillor Buzet's frustration over this, and this debate actually makes the debate about John Nelson Drive look short. If such a thing is possible. In fact, just to compound my rudeness more, can I say this as the classic example of too much where we're not enough doing? I think this proposal is a really good pathway forward. I think it's absolutely essential that we do get on with it. We all know the demographics of that community and the issues around income and access to vehicles and public transportation issues and so on. And there's not too much debate or doubt about the level of need in that community in all sorts of areas. So I think testing the water with a temporary facility of whatever kind is a really good way to go. And the only other comment that I wanted to make was, while it's really good to see the streetworks that have been done out there recently, and I'm sure they're appreciated by locals and visitors alike, and the character of that community, the street scape is changing. The, like, it is a really difficult, as everyone knows, a really difficult issue geographically because of the way the road works and so on. And so I think in investigation of whatever the future holds, the location of the facility will be an absolute key element. I hope that it will be possible to involve some building reuse, and also to do it at the absolute minimum cost, just as everyone would also hope. But it seems to me that if we're looking at something that's clearly going to be beyond simply a library, it needs to be a real community focus, a community hub, and for that to occur, there are all sorts of movement issues that need to be considered in terms of the selection of the location. So clearly that's not a surprise to the people who'll be investigating this, but I think it will be the key element that will make or break the success of the Antu and more of a library complex.
councillor Banks?
As Mr Hawkins already said, a library is no longer a library, it is a community centre anyway, and the extent to which you provide additional community facilities is one of the details that can be worked out later. What we can't do later, I believe, anymore, is say that we're going to do something substantial in the future and we're going to have a little trial with a buzzword pop-up thingy in the meantime. None of this is going to be any good to anybody. They, they say that council works in mysterious ways, and one of the more mysterious ways that I encountered was when we spent five million dollars on a Waikato Aitie community centre at a time when the need was plainly in South Dunedin with its far greater population.
You wish, 4.2, just to dig it.
Councillor Thompson has said, "Build it and they will come."
No, no, I didn't say "build it and they will come", I said it smacks of "build it and they will come", very substantial difference.
I accept the smacking, but "build it and they will come" was what he said. And my answer to that would be that they are already there. South Dunedin is the most densely populated urban area probably in the whole country. And for them not to have had a community centre or a library for so long is one of the great shames of this council. Councillor Buzet's frustration that, and wondering why it hasn't happened and what has got in the way. There have been a number of very large capital projects which have got the council excited and have obviously got in the way in the meantime. I don't want to get into those, they are all done and there's nothing we can do about the capital that's been spent so far. We're now in a situation where we are essentially going to continue to deny South Dunedin its library because we've overdone the capital expenditure in the past. And our only answer at this stage is the easy bit, and that is to just stop doing capital expenditure now, and not look seriously at the hundred million dollars worth every year that we blow on essentially running this bureaucracy. I believe that if we take the more difficult step of not just cutting back on capital expenditure, but look at cutting back on our operational costs in this building here, that we could very easily bring forward the eight million dollars, five million dollars, whatever it's going to take to get the South Dunedin library happening much quicker than 2017. I believe that if we can get staff to actually look at what they essentially pay themselves and the number of jobs they give to themselves, if we could get these operational costs to be reduced or cut back anywhere near as significantly as we've already cut back our capital expenditure, then quite vital facilities like the South Dunedin library could flow from that. I would love to be able to vote for an option which would bypass a temporary pop-up, I think, quite frankly, delaying technique. I don't think the pop-up is going to give us any idea of what a real community centre would actually provide in South Dunedin. To me, it's almost an affront. I can't imagine Ms Turvey or anyone else being impressed at all with a shop front with some books and a few units. I think we need to recognise there's a serious need there, the population is already there, and what we have to do is we have to decide that it's important enough for us to make sure that we prioritise a serious budget for it. We can't borrow any more money. The only way we can get that budget is to seriously cut back on what we said spend operationally.
councillor Waugh?
Thank you, your worship. Bernie, the one thing that I would like to note is, is there any ability to pull anything out of Forbury School? Do they have a library there?
Through the chair, I'm not sure on that, to be honest, I'm sorry.
And the next part of that is, essentially when we start talking pop-up libraries, I look at the Sankilda Community Library and how that's worked for the community. You know, the key thing has just been, you know, I don't know one of the people there personally, they have some great skills and great people, so my logic is, from what I can see, is it going to be the public library going in and saying to the Sankilda Community Library, "Thank you, we're now here, we're going to take this over", or is it?
I can answer that. Referring back to the group that's looking at South Dunedin as a whole, community development are working with a range of interests and stakeholders in South Dunedin. And the intention is that through that group, we draw, make sure that we're reducing the needs of, on the whole, the range of different communities in the area, and also drawing on the resources and expertise that there is in the area. So it would be part of the project.
I want to endorse some of what councillor Vandevos said, in the sense that South Dunedin really needs this now, not in seventeen eighteen, and I think we really need to push this forward and at least have something happen in this next, this next, uh, year.
councillor Buzet?
I think the pop-up library is a good idea, because you might find, if we get the right facility, you have pop-up community services as well. I think that people will use the library, the advocates for the library that have been coming in here for many years have said last time, all they wanted was four walls, and they would do the rest. So I think there is a group out there, a community group, that will get in behind this pop-up library. But you'll also see other organisations that will align with the library, that will serve the community if we get the rights of premises. So I think the key is where we have the pop-up library. I think Forbury School is too far away from the CBD of South Dunedin. So we need somewhere right in the central part of South Dunedin so that people can use the facilities conveniently. With regards to the two fifteen, two sixteen long-term plan, I think it's almost like anything's better than nothing, and there is already an expectation that nothing will happen in two seventeen, two eighteen, so I think we've got to go with that. There is some funding put aside for it, so if we do come back with some options for two, or staff comes back with options for two fifteen, two sixteen, they will have the year, this whole year, to be able to report back to the appropriate committee on what progress they're making. So hopefully some of these options that they've outlined in the papers today will be options that will come back and have discussion through the various committees, so that we can say with confidence that at next year's annual plan, we will be discussing an option, and it'll be only a funding, how much money we put towards it, and not a selection of options that staff have to report back on. So we, in the best case scenario, after next year's annual plan, we should have an option and say, "That's what we're going to go ahead with." I would like to think that's the case. So I support both these recommendations. Ideally, I'd rather have something else, but got to take work you can get, and so I will support them.
councillor Thompson?
Well, look, I can support this, this motion. I've been a lukewarm supporter of this process through the last few years. I've always voted to continue the process. I've always had some concerns about that, and I still have those concerns, and I have concerns around the community centre aspect without really understanding, or without really having an understanding of what that actually means in practice, or what it might be opening us up to or for. So I think that this meets my concerns, and it will give staff the opportunity to thoroughly go into that. My reasons for supporting it today have actually not been primarily around the library per se, but around the notion of redevelopment and sustainability of that South Dunedin area. So it's been more a tool than an end in itself for me. I don't actually like the term "pop-up library", I just, I think what, but, I agree about that, but I think what we actually need is there are less old places out there that we could, we could take, that we could put a library in pretty much straight away, maybe six months, nine months it might take, I don't know, but we'd be reasonably straight away, it could operate as a library. And I think that would meet the immediate need while we address the wider issues. So again, this allows that to happen. I just think the use of the term "pop-up" implies something small and transient, and I don't think it necessarily has to be that way. I do think we've got to be careful in talking about a community facility, that we really understand what that means. If it's simply provision of space, there is ample space and under-utilised space in South Dunedin in community halls, church halls, school halls. I see no point in duplicating that. If it's providing a place for that demographic to meet, and by that demographic, I'm primarily talking about an older group of people, and I know and associate with people who live out in that area, and I can tell you that one of the things they talk to me about is there's nowhere for them to go and meet, the elderly women primarily, mainly living on their own, there's nowhere for them to go and meet at a coffee shop out there. If they want, they have to go to somewhere like a Robbie's or whatever and have a proper meal. If they want the kind of food that's not a six-inch tall, rock-hard bagel that they can't get their false teeth around, you know, there's nothing out there of that ilk. So I think if we're looking at a library, and if we're looking, even if we're looking at a leasehold, we may wish to look at, do we do something like that in it? And that's actually one of the attractions if you look at what Christchurch has done with its satellite libraries. People go there for the cafe, I think they're to a market for what we're trying to achieve here. And they're not populated by the group of people we're looking to provide something for. But so there's plenty of food for thought there. I can support it for that reason. I'm still very uncomfortable about an eight million dollar spend, and I still remain to be convinced that that's actually what we need to do.
councillor Pegg?
Thank you. I hope a lot we're discussing here is a project that will help the revitalisation of the South Dunedin area, and in that I support it wholeheartedly. I think we are taking too much time, we need to expedite it. One way to do it, I suppose, is to show our intent through this, I'm reluctant to call it a pop-up either. Because that doesn't...
We've changed the word.
We changed it. Shop front, that is quick work.
I sensed there was a bit of a disturbing view being taken.
Because it sounded, and it probably, I mean, it is a dummy run or a trial, I suppose, but it is establishing our intent, and it can be more than just the library, I don't think. You've indicated that in your options here, that it could provide some more services as well. But what I don't want to do is to underestimate the potential for a fully developed community facility, because if people say, "Oh, that's what it's going to be", then I feel that that is, that's what's a new one going to look like, a bigger one, but I think there's a whole lot more potential in it. And if you haven't seen the Alexandra example, anybody's seen it? No? Well, next time you're up here, just pop in and have a look, because it's quite a different mix of things that we would use out in South Dunedin quite clearly. But you'll see the layout, you'll see the scale, the scope of it for a town that size. And it's got the rural education part, of course, wouldn't be what we would have at South Dunedin, but it has, it is a kind of model that we could, you know, we could certainly explore. Option one, I'm just, rather, point one in the resolution, is something I thought we were doing with this report. But I don't know whether there's anything, what more would we be doing that's not in there on one. So I'm not sure that that is advancing this project in any way, but I, like others here, would like to see something happen in that blank space sixteen, seventeen, that is more substance than what it looks like in this plan, this report.
councillor Noon?
Thank you, worship. I must respond to councillor Vandevos's comments earlier on about the Waikato Aitie complex at five million dollars. I actually thought I was listening to Martin Luther King for a moment, but the point is, five million dollars was mentioned, it was 4.2 was the cost of the project. A community trust was established, they raised 700k, so the actual real cost was 3.5 for the capital cost to the city. So I just wanted to clarify that, but I live in a part of the city, or represent a part of the city, that's very fortunate that has three community libraries. And one of those libraries has had a significant upgrade, being the Blueskin Library. It is the Blueskin Community Complex. the Blueskin Library. It is the Blueskin Community Complex. And one of the reasons why it's called that is that it provides a number of functions for the community. And one of the other reasons why it was called that was for the local community to be able to drive that fundraising, the fundraising aspect of it. It needed to have wider ramifications for the community simply because the trusts that provide funding for those sorts of projects are, are looking for all the boxes to be ticked, not just, you know, the library box, for example. I think the South Dunedin community have been particularly patient. Historically, I have supported the inclusion of the capital in the, in the, the long-term plan. I would be concerned about shifting that. I'm not, I'm not at this point. I'm going to keep my powder dry with regards to the, the timing of that, that capital expenditure. But I certainly do support the deputy mayor's, I think, good intentions to provide at least something in the short term to refill the gap in a, in a part of the city that actually hasn't received a lot in terms of city investment in recent years.
Councilor Law?
He had a comments there probably a wee bit the same. I, I really believe that they're talking eight million dollars here, it's a lot of money if you haven't got it, and it's a lot of money if you have to borrow it. But on the other hand, if there was an option for like, for example, the Walkden Russell Building, I don't know what it costs annually, let's say building like that, I've got no idea. But if there's people out there saying, give us a building and we'll do the rest, is there not options here that could be significantly less than eight million dollars? Simply take out a, a, a rent in a building, and, and maybe it might only be a few hundred thousand a, a speck and tidy up a building in a way that's like, biggest problem you're probably going to find is. But you then, as you said, whatever you do, you might crush your heads up, but yeah. That's my feeling. Just.
Councilor McTash?
I have to read Hillary's, so that's the first thing I'm going to do. So Councilor Calvert says, great work within best to save. I think that's our idea. I love the idea of a pop-up library in South Dunedin, and the idea of using existing buildings, maybe even a heritage building, and giving support to existing businesses by providing a warm place to meet, allowing for people to use nearby cafes etcetera as they currently do. And the idea of getting together with the current voluntary library and looking at how the bus, how the book bus fits in. I would also like to see us looking at a free bus into town as a way of helping South Dunedin access the central library. So that's Councilor Calvert. I'd just like to make a few comments. The first is the reason why, for those who are frustrated about the lack of progress on this, the reason why it wasn't expedited in the last term is that we simply didn't have the capital headroom to do so. And I remain unconvinced that we will, that we have the capital headroom any time in the next five to seven years to spend eight million dollars on a community complex. And that's not because I don't like the idea of a community complex, it's simply because I'm aware of all of the other budgetary pressures that we have. We haven't even considered the aquatic facility out at Moskell. It's quite clear that there are going to be choices for this council, and that we won't be able to do everything because previous councils have committed to large capital expenditure projects and we are paying those off. That's why it hasn't been expedited. Not because there isn't demand in the community, not because there hasn't been support around this table for that vision. And I think that it's important to be really clear about that. Secondly, I support the idea of a shop front library, and I support this for a number of reasons. The first is, it's a really neat opportunity for co-development. You know, we, we know that there are different ideas in that community about what the space can be used for. Councilor Thompson has expressed some, some concerns that we haven't got a clear vision for what that might be. That's because I think that we need to work with, and I think that's a positive, that's because that, that means that we can work with that community to, to co-develop that vision. And, and the idea of not pouring eight million dollars immediately into a facility is great because it means that we won't be spending a whole load of money on something that we're not sure that the community wants or will use. So I think in our community development, we need to move away from thinking that we have all the answers, and we, and we need to move firmly in the direction of knowing that the community has the answers to what they want and what they need. And we need to be working with them to, to, to ensure that what we are putting in the ground, onto the ground, onto those shop fronts is what is going to work for that community. So I actually see it as an opportunity. I do think that it's, would be really good if we could do some of it during fourteen, fifteen. I am slightly uncomfortable that we would be putting out a draft budget without including any potential expenditure around that. It seems a little bit odd to me that we wouldn't do that. So that's why I'm slightly uncomfortable with two as it currently stands. The way that one is phrased, I also, I appreciate the intent, I'm also slightly uncomfortable with for two reasons. Firstly, I think that it leaves on the table all of options one to four, as far as I can tell. And that is an enormous amount of work to ask staff to do when they won't have had any kind of test run with a South Dunedin shop front library. Okay. So, so perhaps, I mean, from my perspective, I don't support option one in our papers. I, I just don't think that we can afford that. I personally would be looking at options two, three and four. And my preference would be either an option two or an option four. I, I, I think that developing, committing to a commercial development partnership is always a little bit fraught. So that would be my perspective. I would prefer to see options two and four investigated for the long-term plan. I also think it will be difficult for us to make any determination on options until we have had some kind of testbed scenario with a shop front library in South Dunedin underway. So I think the timing of the LTP is going to be difficult. Having said all of that, I think that the recommendations are broad enough that I can support them, but I don't think that that is necessarily particularly helpful for staff in guiding their work. So I would prefer to suggest, and perhaps it's coming, a slightly tighter option one.
It was actually a stop.
Oh, very good.
Will be there.
Okay, it's coming, good.
Okay, I can, I will be supporting this resolution. And I think, going back to what I said earlier about context, I think in addition to the quite understandable frustration of the community expressed by Councilor Bizet, in addition to that, I think that it's fair to say, and I think someone else referred to this, that the South Dunedin area probably has been neglected for decades in, in comparison with other parts of the city. And that was really exacerbated, not purposely, but exacerbated by the, the shifting of, of the divvying away with Carisbrook and the shifting of the stadium to the north end of town. A whole periodic influx of people that used to come into South Dunedin and enjoy it, no longer do. So that just exacerbated the feeling on the part of South Dunedin that they were being neglected and, and, and there was very little investment there. So for a number of reasons, I think that we need to be looking at what, what we can facilitate in that area. I, I believe there's clearly a need. I don't know what, quite what those needs are, and as some of that councillors have mentioned, the best way to find out is to, is to trial this and then see what sort of groups come out of the woodwork and what needs they have. But we know, we do know some things, and that is that Polytech, for instance, was running computer courses in that area but couldn't sustain the funding for it. But there was a need for them and there was a use for them. So there's, there's one thing. We know that recently there's been a social sector trial, which has identified one of the main issues in South Dunedin being youth unemployment. We know that they are talking about putting a hub down there to address that issue. There's, there's another use. And I'm sure that there are a whole lot of other groups who would welcome the opportunity to, to put uses and, and facilities into any, anything we open. So I think this is a very good step forward. I think it's a prudent way of doing it because I agree with the speakers who have said that, that likelihood that we are going to just find, be able to find the headroom to, to expend or borrow eight million dollars is, is remote. So we have to be looking, A, at more efficient ways, more economical ways of producing the same result, but also we need to be testing exactly what we're spending the money on. So I think this is a very good way of doing it, and it's a way of doing it now.